I'd like to call the Board of Education regular meeting into open session today. Are we compliance with open meeting law notification?
We are.
All right, can you please take the roll call?
Harlan?
Here.
Hertzah?
Here.
Karns?
Here.
Hushel?
Here.
Solaji?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
Thank you, I would like to invite Dr. Cartwright to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will have the wonderful experience of recognizing the Oshkosh Area School District Employees of the Year. This will be led by Dr. Jones, Dr. Cartwright, and myself.
Thank you, Board President. Hushel, I appreciate it. This is a very exciting time for us in the school year. We have such awesome employees in our district. We are so grateful for them and the work that they do. And as part of Strategic Plan Number One, we're on Number Three, we had a program, the Board initiated a program to recognize our outstanding employees, and we have a whole process that we go through to determine that, and I'm excited to share with you the winners that we have. So I'm going to start with Carrie Sauer, if she would come forward, please, and take a seat. Carrie is our elementary, one of two elementary of the, excuse me, Elementary Employee of the Year winner. Carrie has served the Oakwood School community for 20 years, and her love for the school, students, and staff radiates from her. She is determined, flexible, and persistent. Carrie has always been determined to make a difference in the lives of every student that she encounters. This year, more than ever, she was determined to see the silver lining and to continue to make learning and progress be the forefront of everything she does. She was determined to make every day matter and often stayed late or came in on weekends to plan with her team to get things ready. Carrie is the epitome of the word flexible. When things changed, as they often did this year, she went with the flow and made the best of it. She is not a person who says, "I can't," but looks for ways to say, "I can get it done." Whether it was live streaming a lesson or learning new technology on the fly, while these things do not come easy to her, she was flexible in her thinking and used determination to get it done. She tried everything new that came her way. Carrie also believes that all students can and will make progress. She is a persistent positive role model for students and the Oakwood School family. She somehow knows when others need encouragement and sends a helpful message, or even just a text to brighten their day. This has been a most extraordinary year, and Carrie Sauer has been determined, flexible, and persistent all the way, always putting students first. Please let us help recognize Carrie as the Employee of the Year at the elementary level.
Congratulations.
Our next Elementary Employee of the Year is Dawn Johnson.
Dawn is a fifth grade teacher at Reed Elementary. Dawn Johnson has served the Oshkosh Area School District for 25 years. In 2012, she retired from Washington Elementary but missed working with students so deeply that she came out of retirement to teach at Reed Elementary. Dawn encourages her students every day. She is a constant in their lives. She comes to school with a smile and a warmth that is contagious. She is always striving to better herself for the good of her students. She is constantly investigating and implementing interactive and innovative lessons to encourage her students. She vigorously explores additional ways to foster engagement. She is loved by her students and coworkers. She is the epitome of a caring, empathetic, and motivating teacher. Her love and care for her students is evident in everything that she does and to anyone she meets. Dawn is also the type of teacher that impacts a student for life in the most positive and exceptional ways. For countless students, her influence has been, had a profound impact on their lives for years after they have left the elementary school. Her impact is evident in the success of her students, who mature both emotionally and academically while in her care. In fact, her students have all proven to have a substantial increase in math and literacy performance during their time with her. Dawn Johnson has served and continues to serve this district and its incredible families in the most effective, heartfelt, and sincere manner. Congratulations. Congratulations. Now we'll move on to, we have two employees in the secondary category or secondary school level, and the first one is David Tucher. David is a technology education teacher at Merrill Middle School. David is the talent veteran educator who is humble, compassionate, creative, and dedicated. David is passionate about the technology and engineering field and strives to engage students in learning that extends beyond the classroom. He incorporates life lessons seamlessly into his classes, guiding students to not just be future engineers, but well-rounded individuals that will have a lasting impact in the world. He is the founder and advisor of the Merrill Middle Schools Skills USA Club, demonstrating yet another way in which he wants the learning of students that they are doing in the classroom to apply to the real-world experiences they will face as adults. He sets the bar high for every student and sees every child as more than capable of achieving high standards. David is the epitome of what it means to be a lifelong learner, which has been evident during the pandemic as he sought to improve how he delivers his normally hands-on content. David worked tirelessly to research and get approved for a 3D CAD program to allow for a seamless transition from the brick and mortar classroom to the virtual classroom and then back again. No time was wasted allowing students to continue learning, creating, and exploring, no matter what learning environment they were in. David also goes above and beyond outside of his teaching responsibilities. He is always out-supervising and engaging with kids over lunch and recess, and it is common to find him working late nights and weekends in the lab, learning about new software and equipment for the sake of his students. David's actions and words have transcended the walls of the tech ed shop. He has made a difference in countless lives, both on the student and teacher level. David Tucher is an outstanding educator, leader, and professional, and is most deserving of this recognition. Congratulations. Next, also in the secondary category of Employee of the Year is Ken Levine. Ken is a math teacher at West High School. Ken has been an outstanding teacher and coach throughout his long tenure at West, but the challenge of the past year have highlighted his excellence. Students, families, and staff have all struggled with teaching and learning through the COVID-19 pandemic. In contrast, the pandemic brought out the best in Ken. He has shown a tremendous amount of flexibility to be able to adapt to the different learning models. During fully virtual learning, Ken kept his students engaged and entertained with the running joke that he was hiding in his basement from the zombie apocalypse. His lessons were a joy to watch in an otherwise difficult time. At the same time, Ken provided excellent instruction and was hyper-responsive to student needs. Students and families praised Ken for his excellent teaching during the COVID experience, and one of his lessons was even shared with the leadership of Oshkosh as an exemplar of a virtual lesson. Ken brings a sense of humor that resonates with students and staff. Students who struggle with or even dread math enjoy Ken's class. He keeps things light and makes learning fun, is also a source of humor for other members of the staff. In a time when teachers are being challenged in a way that they have never been before, the positive impact on his humor and his colleagues has been a great achievement. Ken Levine has served the students and families of the Oshkosh Area School District since 1990, and he has done so with tremendous work ethic, a passion for student success, high expectations for all, and of course, a great sense of humor. Congratulations, Ken. Next up, the next category we have is Administrator of the Year, and I'd like to call upon Erin Erin is the principal at Oshkosh West High School. Great leaders by example, great leaders lead by example, and Erin is no exception. She genuinely cares about her staff members and their well-being, going out of her way to write positive notes and encourage her team members in a profession that can at times be thankless and emotionally exhausting. Erin understands the simple truth that teachers are most effective when they know they have the support of their administrators. In fact, she has even put together a team of teachers known as the Guiding Coalition to lead the school. Rather than imposing her agenda in a top-down fashion, she has given this team of teachers the power to lead the school in a way that is best for the staff and for the students. Most importantly, Erin is the greatest advocate of her students. She doesn't just give lip service to caring about the kids. Erin has demonstrated time and time again that the students and their well-being come first. She has put together a group of students known as Cole's Cabinet that she meets with on a regular basis to address student concerns. She also makes a concerted effort to get to know as many as possible, something that is hard to do in a large school as West. Erin's previous experience as an elementary school principal has been invaluable to West students. There are a lot of hurting teenagers out there, and whereas high school teachers are trained to see the adult in the teenager, Erin can see the child in the teenager, and that has made all the difference. Erin has created a culture of compassion and excellence that reverberates throughout the whole building. She has continued in an environment in which students and teachers are pushed to excellence and yet know that they will be cared for even if despite their best efforts, they fail to meet those expectations. While no one is perfect, Erin certainly comes close, and there are two things Erin's school community knows for sure: no one questions her integrity and no one questions her compassion, and for that, her entire school community is grateful and blessed. Congratulations, Erin. The next category we have is the First Year Teacher of the Year. This is a student, a teacher who is new to the profession of education, and we're pleased to announce Rachel Witrock. Rachel is a second grade teacher at Washington Elementary. Rachel has been such a great teacher this year, it's hard to believe that it is her first year of teaching. She is very kind, considerate, caring, and always available to help students and their families. One of her families had this to say about her: "Rachel takes a personal interest in my child's success, and with all her help, she has built confidence in my child. She makes me feel that my child's learning experiences are important and cares for their success. I've watched my child during their classroom meet many times with classmates, and Rachel does an outstanding job with all of the students. She makes everything fun and interactive, and with this, I can see that a lot of the students really enjoy her class. I am also so amazed at how patient she is with all the students, even if she has to repeat and explain things over and over again. She gives all students the chance to share and express their thoughts and ideas, which is so awesome because this is what gets my child to open up and feel comfortable. She listens to her students and helps them with problems, even if it doesn't pertain to her classroom studies. There are so many good things to say about Rachel, and her families cannot thank her enough. Without a doubt, things have been easier this year because of her, and she is appreciated more than she knows. Congratulations." And moving on to our next category of employees is the Support Staff Employee of the Year. I'd like to ask Shonda Messerschmidt to please join us. Shonda is the Secretary at Washington Elementary. Shonda Messerschmidt, known as Ms. Shonda, is more than just a secretary at Washington Elementary School. She is the one who gives hugs, helps parents, puts on Band-Aids, and has high expectations for all students. Shonda's dedication to the students and staff of Washington is second to none. Shonda joined the district as a medical assistant, but she came into the role of secretary willing to learn and quickly became knowledgeable of all things at Washington. When students or parents come to the office seeking assistance, it is often that Shonda knows the answer, and if she doesn't, she will find it. She is incredibly organized and is always willing to do what needs to be done. What sets Shonda apart from so many of her relationships with students, what sets her apart is her relationships with students and families. This is evident in the school's Human Safe Place Survey, in which students identify who they feel most safe with and when they are feeling, when they are feeling big emotions. Shonda is chosen more than any other staff member in the building, and it is clear that students feel safe with her. Not only does Shonda have great relationships with students, but with their families as well. She works tirelessly to ensure that all Washington families have what they need to help children be successful. During the holidays, Shonda organizes Christmas lists for families and seeks donations to help those families have a holiday they wouldn't have been able to have. She even coordinates all the gifts and the pickups by the families. Shonda's kind, caring, and loving heart has coined her the nickname "Shana Mama" by staff. She is always willing to give a hug and listen to students and adults alike. She will hold students accountable and be there to help celebrate with them as well. She will give advice to a frustrated adult and then follow up to ensure that they did something, that they did something to solve their problem. Washington would not be what it is without Shonda. She's the heart, soul, and the glue that holds it together. Congratulations, Shonda. Also in the Support Staff category, we have Doug Whiteley. Doug is an EBD paraprofessional at Oshkosh West High School. Doug exceeds expectations on a daily basis, and he does so working in a difficult role with students who often struggle to regulate their behavior. Doug has been serving as an EBD paraprofessional for numerous years, which is a job that many people do not stay in for long. If someone were to walk into the EBD room at any given point, they would observe Doug actively engaged with the students with a smile on his face. He often goes above and beyond by leading class discussions, completing progress monitoring, and taking struggling students under his wing. For students who often lack positive relationships in their lives, Doug is a trusted and friendly face as well as an outstanding role model. He embodies the traits that students who have a history of trauma need the most. He is supportive, helpful, and consistent. When students are escalated, Doug remains completely calm and gives students the space and the quiet that they need in order to get themselves regulated. Doug's service to the Oshkosh Area School District extends beyond the walls of the EBD room. He is also involved as a basketball and baseball coach, as well as a volunteer for football. In addition, Doug has always made it clear that he is willing to help in any way needed. His selfless commitment to serve in whatever capacity is needed is truly appreciated. Students and staff alike recognize Doug for his active involvement in the Oshkosh West community, his hard work, his kindness, and his sense of humor. The school is incredibly fortunate to have Doug Whiteley as a team member. Congratulations, Doug. We have added this year a different category because of what we have gone through this year, and we're entitling it Frontline Employee of the Year, and we are recognizing the Oshkosh Area School District School Nurses. While recognizing an entire group of employees may be unprecedented, it is certainly well-deserved in a year that has been anything but normal. On the surface, the nomination of our school nurse team this year seems obvious. They have been largely responsible for overseeing the health and safety of our students and staff during this unprecedented pandemic. Yet, having a clear understanding of everything that went into making this year possible highlights how truly deserving they are of this award. Each of our seven school nurses has spent countless hours completing a variety of tasks that in a normal year would not be part of their role. For instance, the nurse team spent a great deal of time researching best practice related to COVID-19 mitigation, providing input into the district's COVID-19 handbook, protocols, and safety plans, planning with school teams for the implementation of safety protocols, establishing isolation rooms, and organizing the nurse office to accommodate students who have symptoms of COVID-19, responding to questions from staff, students, and families about COVID-19 or the district's protocols, and the list goes on and on. But nothing quite appears, nothing quite compares to the time and effort this group put into the contact tracing process. Each nurse spent large portions of their days and nights, including weekends, making phone calls, sending emails, and documenting cases, all in an effort to prevent the spread of COVID-19 in our schools. On top of that, the responses they received when informing others of their close contact status and quarantine timeline were not always pleasant. This group faced many extremely difficult situations throughout the school year and always operated professionally with the students' and the staff's health and safety at the forefront of all their decisions. We are very grateful to have these incredible frontline workers, and we'd like to recognize them individually. First with Marnie Depot.
Dr. Jones, thank you for leading us in the recognition of our wonderful Employees of the Year.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Cartwright, I wonder if you might be able to give some description of some of the other events that took place in recognizing the Employees of the Year?
Most certainly. So, we went out to every one of our schools, and we usually make arrangements ahead of time with our principals so that they can give us the optimum time to do school visits in order to deliver the wonderful news of recognizing them as Employees of the Year. So typically what happens, and it did occur this year as well, is going around, and so this would be for Dr. Jones, Dr. Gunlock, and myself, we usually deliver a small gift with them. This year, it was like a cup with flowers as well and treats. And we go in and we, a lot of times, just kind of surprise them. They have no idea that we're coming, and it's a wonderful way of just delivering that wonderful and very special news.
Thank you for that. And the one thing that's different, because we are in dealing with COVID at this point, is typically there's a celebration that also takes place over at Tipler School where they are formally recognized to the community as well, similar to what goes on in here, but they're invited to bring their families to be recognized and to share all the joy that takes place in recognizing our wonderful Employees of the Year. Before we move into Board and Administrator Reports, I want to take a moment to discuss the potential of moving the agenda around this evening. So, if you all look, we have two workshops, High Performing Board Training and Superintended Search Update. I plan for those to take a little bit of time, and we'll need our emphasis and consideration as well, no different than anything else on the agenda. But my hope is that we might be able to move the Consent Agenda and the Individually Considered Resolutions to take place before the workshops. So, if someone, I cannot make motions as the president of the Board, so I would entertain a motion to do that.
I also move to move the Consent Agenda, Consent Resolution Agenda and Individually Considered Resolutions to after the, do you want those after the Board and Administrator Reports?
No, I would like the No, I would like those after the agenda-related public forum. Thank you for that question.
That would be the motion then, to move Consent Resolution Agenda and Individually Considered Resolutions on this agenda right after non-agenda-related and agenda-related public forum.
So, Herzog moved, Carlin, second?
It was close.
Carlin, second. Discussion. There is discussion on this motion? None? Okay. One of the reasons being, again, is that we're, you know, we have these two workshops. Also, I wanted to be considerate of staff and their time as well. Some staff are here because of our consideration of what's going on in the Consent Resolution Agenda, and that may give them the flexibility to leave a little bit earlier as well. Not saying that they have to leave, they're more than welcome to stay all night and go through all of this with us. But I wanted to provide that consideration to us and to them. So, if there's no other questions or discussion, please call the roll.
Herzog?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Peschel?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Lyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next part of the agenda is Board and Administrator Reports. So first is a Board President's Report. I've only been the Board President for about two and a half days at this point, and I can tell you it's been a little bit busier than what I'm used to. So, that's a good thing. The things I would like to report tonight is that a couple of weeks ago, as a regular Board Member, I began to visit, to reach out to principals of schools and to request tours and for those principals to share with me things that I might not learn about those schools or might not know just from being in a boardroom. And I wanted to connect with our school communities a little bit more because COVID has brought in a level of disconnect that I think I was ready to start to rebuild and to relive the vibrancy of our schools. So, so far, I have toured Tipler. I've toured Carl Trager, Merrill Middle School, and Webster Stanley Middle School. I have not yet, I had to reschedule South Park because I was home with sick children. And this Friday, I will be touring West High School and North High School as well. So, I want to encourage all of you to begin your process of touring schools. Many of us, we kind of set goals that we want to visit all the schools in the district by a certain time, and I encourage you to do that. I do want to encourage you to reach out to the principals and to schedule a time. Please don't just show up. Please schedule a time with them. I, in mine, I am spending about an hour to an hour and a half at each school doing that. And so, like I said, I have found it to be very useful and reconnecting. So, with that, also, when you do your visits, also, I encourage you to let Dr. Cartwright know that she'll be in attendance at the school, just in the case of it helps organize if things don't work out, you know, in regards to me needing to reschedule or something like that. So, and it's just something that we like to communicate on a higher level, that we are in schools and that administration members know that as well. So, it's good that they know that we're in schools. My next couple of things are more housekeeping elements that I wanted to bring up with all Board Members. I would like to bring a level of formality in how we address each other in the sessions of the Board Meetings. And so, I would like everyone to be addressed as, let's use myself as an example, Mr. Peschel or Board Member Peschel. However you want to do that, I don't need to be referred to as President Peschel in any way, but Board Member Peschel is fine. But I expect that, as your President, that you all will respectfully refer to each other in that manner. I believe it brings a level of professional informfulness, professionalism and formalness to our businesses, to our business here. So, and then, I wanted to also kind of communicate how I'm going to moderate this, kind of the speakers list, as we would call it. So, I'm gonna, when I call on someone to speak, I would like you to refer, to get my attention so that I can kind of create a speakers list. And when I acknowledge that it's your turn to speak, I will say your name formally, and then I will also acknowledge the person who we would refer to as on deck so that they can be prepared for their comments as well. I am going to afford myself the ability to moderate the list in a way that incorporates all voices to be heard and not just a couple of voices. So even if you're kind of sitting quiet on the sideline, I might ask you if you have anything to add to this. If I feel maybe you're domineering in the conversation a little bit, I might not call on you right away when you have your hands up, and I might seek out that person who may not be fully involved in the conversation. So I have found that this method of moderating speakers lists is a way to incorporate voices that we don't necessarily hear and has a significant impact on positive directions in how we go about making decisions on behalf of organizations that I've worked with in the past. So, I've utilized this method already when I was the Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee. I found that it allows for all majority and minority voices to be heard on an equal and equitable level. So, that's all I have.
I have a question. Mr. Peschel, what is the, what would you like us to do if we want to speak? Are we raising our hand? Are we?
I'm a, I'd say I'm an active observer.
Okay.
And so, I will actively be looking at you, looking for your interest to speak. So, I don't think you have to raise your hand. If you're not, if I'm not getting, if you're not getting my attention, go ahead and do that. But, but, so, no preferred preference on how to do that.
Okay.
Any other questions related to these processes? Okay. Moving on, I would like to present Dr. Cartwright and her ability to give a report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peschel. So today, we're going to start at Oshkosh West High School. Congratulations to the many Oshkosh West student athletes for recent successes. And we're going to polish this moment over to the slide. There we go. The girls, the West Girls Swimming and Diving Team was named conference champions this season, and numerous swimmers qualified for the WIA Alternative Fall State Meet. Additionally, Head Coach Kelly Wayne received Coach of the Year honors. The West Volleyball Team was named WIA Alternative Fall Regional Champions. And Oshkosh West softball player Taylor Allen recently signed a letter to intend to play softball next year at Marion University. Again, congratulations and great job, everyone. Congratulations to the Perry Tipler and the Alps Lego League Team. Students had a fantastic day when competing in the Wisconsin State Lego League Championship and scored high marks in all categories. Plus, the virtual state championship was hosted by Oshkosh Waves Robotics, who did an outstanding job providing technical support to the tournament judges, referees, and teams. Students in the Merrill Elementary School Encompass Program recently incorporated social skills into writing and created a book that they are having published. Each student wrote a section with self-regulation, coping strategies to help teach other students about these topics. Oshkosh North High School student Maya Walker recently received the National Award for Aspirations in Computing. The award, sponsored by the National Center for Women in Information Technology, recognizes high school students for their computing-related achievements and interests as part of an effort to encourage more young women to choose careers in technology. Oshkosh West High School Senior Jack Amen recently won the first-ever Fox Valley Technical College Virtual High School Desert Competition. Congratulations and great work, Jack. The district is grateful for our ability to provide all Oshkosh K-12 students with free city busing via the GoTrans and Oshkosh Bus Lines, a benefit that started last September. This service is made possible through a partnership between the city of Oshkosh, the district, and private funders. And we are pleased to report that the student ridership on GoTrans has increased drastically. In the first two months of 2020, GoTrans tallied 49 student rides. In January and February 2021, there have been over 6,000 student rides. Some of this is likely due to a change in the data collection processes, but it is largely due to the systemic change since students became available to ride for free by showing their school ID. Next week is Teachers Appreciation Week, the perfect time for us to thank teachers for their tremendous dedication, creativity, and problem-solving during this challenging year. Please join us in recognizing our teachers and thanking them for all that they do for our students, schools, district, and community. And be sure to tell the teachers in your life how much they are appreciated.
At this time, Mr. Peschel, if I may, transition into District Administrative Supplemental Reports.
Please do.
Mr. Kammer?
Good evening, everybody. For those new faces in the room, each Board Meeting, I give a little bit of an overview as to the current status of COVID-19 in our district. So, there are some reoccurring topics that you'll notice come up every week, and every now and then, there are some new topics that become a part of the report as well. So, I typically begin by covering the Winnebago County Health Department Data Summary. That's put out on a weekly basis. It's on their website. The link to that is in my Board Report. But what that data summary looks at is the current status of not only the total county in terms of case rate, but it also breaks down the geographical boundary of each school district in the county and looks at individual case rates for those school districts. So, when I talk about case rate, what that means is it looks at the number of positive cases per 100,000 people in that particular area over a two-week period. So hopefully, that gives you a little bit of reference for the numbers that I'll be talking about. The other term I'll be using is burden status. So the burden status is the category that's dictated by that case rate. So it's broken down into either low, moderate, moderately high, high, very high, or critically high. And typically, the higher the case rate, the more risk there is to transmission in the community. So, for this most recent Winnebago County Data Summary, which covered the period between April 7th and April 20th, the case rate for the Oshkosh Area School District geographical boundary was 85.8, which placed us in the moderately high category. And it's down slightly from last week, when we were at 95. So that's a good sign. But even though the case rate for our district and the county is down slightly, the overall case rate for the state has risen slightly. So hopefully, that's a trend that doesn't continue. One of the things that we also do is we calculate the case rate and the burden status for individual grade levels in our school district. So that looks at exclusively Oshkosh Area School District students. We break it down by the K-2 grade level, the 3.5 grade level, the 6.8 grade level, and the 9.12 grade level. And for the same two-week period, the burden status for each of those grade levels was considered to be in the high category. So the next topic that my report covers is just a status update in terms of the PPE that we have available in the district and the PP that's already been distributed. So since the start of the year, we've distributed over 45,000 masks to schools throughout the district. So that includes adult-sized masks and child-sized masks, both cloth masks and disposable masks. We still have about 34,000 in stock. I'm confident that'll get us through the end of this school year. And depending on what things look like to begin next year, we might have to beef up that supply a little bit. But earlier this year, we distributed over 9,600 plastic barriers to our schools to help with mitigation. We've done a number of other things, including equipping our health offices with a lot of different types of PPE, like medical masks, face shields, gloves, goggles, thermometers, gowns, wipes, et cetera. And all of that has contributed to us to, you know, keeping case rates relatively low in our schools. From a vaccination standpoint, the district continues to promote opportunities for staff and eligible students to be vaccinated. So anytime we learn of opportunities in the community, we try to pass those along as quickly as possible. Currently, about 30% of people in Winnebago County who are eligible are fully vaccinated. So it's nice to see that percentage continues to grow each week. And as a reminder, and this is really important, that any student, eligible student or staff member who's been fully vaccinated does not need to quarantine if they are close contact to somebody who has either tested positive for COVID-19 or is demonstrating symptoms. So, that's a question we get pretty frequently, and we recently put out some communication on that. So just as a reminder, that is a huge perk of being fully vaccinated is, in a lot of those instances, you're not going to have to quarantine. As a reminder, the Oshkosh Area School District Dashboard continues to be active on our website. The dashboard is updated twice a week on Mondays and Thursdays. And what that does is it keeps an active total of the number of positive cases we have in the school district and the number of quarantines. So it looks at, you know, in that particular moment, actively how many we have, and then cumulatively, throughout the course of the year, how many we've had. So, as of this past Monday, April 26th, we had 12 active cases in the district, and that was at nine different schools and consisted of 10 students and two staff members. And since the start of the school year, we've had 647 positive cases in the district, and we've had 8,904 quarantines. And then I do have a couple of updates related to recent changes at the district level related to COVID. So the CDC, a few weeks ago, came out with some guidance on surface-level transmission. And the research that the CDC referenced indicates that the chances of contracting COVID-19 through surface-level transmission is relatively low. So based on the research and some of the recommendations from the CDC, we've scaled back our disinfecting practices a little bit. And the reason for that is, you know, in the past, we've had teachers, especially at the secondary level, disinfecting chairs, desks, commonly touched surface in between classes, which is a huge burden for them. And in some of our schools, it was creating some obstacles, like students having to wait in the hallway and teachers not having time to do much of anything else in between classes. So, the guidance that we recently came out with indicates that teachers no longer have to disinfect in between classes. Now, we are still going to be disinfecting and sanitizing on a regular basis. Those spots will still be disinfected at least once a day. But given the guidance that came out, we felt comfortable scaling that back a little bit. One other key point is that any materials or objects that are shared between students would still have to be cleaned before they're used by another student, just so that's clear. The other updates I have are related to athletics. We recently announced that we're going to begin allowing up to four spectators per student to attend our spring sporting events. All of our spring sports are held outdoors. So that was one of the big reasons that we felt comfortable moving to four, because there's more space, and research shows that transmission is less likely outdoors. And then, one other piece, the CDC came out with guidance earlier this week indicating that individuals who are fully vaccinated do not need to wear masks outdoors if they're not in large crowds. So, based on that, we updated our guidance to spectators and their use of masks at athletic events. So, basically, the new guidance that we put out is if you're a spectator at one of our athletic events, masks are still highly encouraged, especially if you're not vaccinated, but they're no longer going to be required. With that being said, there is one big caveat. Any athletic event at UW-Oshkosh Titan Stadium, any spectators who attend that would still be required to wear masks. And the reason- And the reason for that is we have an agreement with UW Oshkosh. It was approved by both them and the Health Department. And as a part of that agreement, we have announced that all spectators will wear masks. So unless that is modified, that is the route we will continue to go. So whether or not that'll change in the future, I don't know at this point. Dr. Cartwright?
If I may, Mr. Kammer. Also, just a clarification that if we're hosting any type of events that are not our venue, that does currently fall under the city ordinance as far as the mask-wearing at this point in time. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Thank you.
Mr. Kammer, thank you. Has the CDC, recent CDC guideline changes affected how we're going to plan for potential events like prom or, you know, big type of activities like graduation? I know that those are huge concerns to a lot of citizens in the community.
Yeah, so it is a challenge to think about some of those events that are typically held indoors. And the guidance that has come out, I mean, like this past week, was dealing mostly with outdoors and some of the findings related to limited transmission outdoors. I don't know at this point how that is going to impact graduation or prom or other events like that. It is something that we continue to review and discuss.
Thank you.
If I may supplement the answer as well, is also being aware of that, for example, some of the venues that we rent, so for example, the arena, they do limit the number of individuals that we can put into that facility. So I know with some of the changes that are happening with the CDC, and we have reached out to find out if there's, you know, changes to what we originally had as far as agreement is concerned. But oftentimes, it appears that the district is the one who's putting those limitations in place, and in this case, that is not the case. So I wanted to just to make that public clarification as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. I think that's really helpful, because people are really concerned, and how is this going to affect my kid's life, once-in-a-chance, lifelong memory? And I appreciate that follow-up answer.
Ms. Conrad, did you have a question?
I did. Thank you. First, I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Kammer. You have been giving us these reports for a year now, and you have done an excellent job. And thank you for always being so thorough and patient with our questions. You've done a fabulous job, and I'm so grateful. My question is, you mentioned that we're at thirty percent vaccine. Is that for the county, or is that for our schools? And do we know what our schools, how much, the percentage that's vaccinated in our schools?
So the thirty percent that I referenced was for Winnebago County.
County, okay.
Yep. In terms of our students or staff, we don't have that information. We don't require those individuals to report their vaccination status. So that's something we'll never know for sure.
It's a HIPAA thing, I would imagine, that we can't...
Yeah, I don't know if there are legal pieces to that, but it is something that we just decided that we're not going to pursue at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point in time, I'll ask for Dr. Brown, Ms. Conrad, Mr. Kammer, and Ms. Perron to come up to give us an update related to summer school.
I'm Julie Conrad, along with Dr. Brown, Mr. Kammer, and Linda, Ms. Perron here. And also with us, we have Doris Bailey, who is the elementary summer school principal, Dan Dunn, who is the secondary-year high school summer school principal, and Kelly Skifstad, who is our extended school year coordinator. They also contributed to the report and also the resolution that is before you later this evening for summer school staffing. So we were asked to provide an overview of what summer school looks like in the Oshkosh Area School District. So we'll start with that when we look at summer school, we really believe that summer school needs to be engaging, enriching, and fun. And over the time, when we start to look at effective practices when it comes to summer school, we need students to be in summer school, to be engaged, to actually get the impact and the effects. And so there's been a shift in thinking that summer school shouldn't be like punitive or, you know, not a remediation, but it should be enriching and to get schools there to look at summer learning versus going to summer school. And so we've started to make those shifts. We started to make those shifts in 2016, 17, so that we are capturing students and inviting them to participate with us in summer school. So in there, there was a link to our summer school website where we had all of our different opportunities, everything from core subject areas to the fine arts, to physical education, technology, and culinary arts is one of the most popular classes that we offer in summer school. Kids like to cook. So we just want to let you know about that. So every single one of our elementary and our middle schools work with care teams, which are comprised of people services staff, special education staff, our principals and teachers, looking for who do we really need to invite to summer school to say, who do we need to engage to continue and build on the learning that they have been doing during the school year? So that continues on. And so even though the registration window may be closed, we continue to invite students to make sure that they have every opportunity to engage in learning. And so when they engage in learning, we have a couple different courses that we offer. We have getting-ready courses, which provides students in a very fun way of the taste of school classrooms, et cetera, and how to step up to the next grade level. And that's particularly in kindergarten and first grade. Then you'll notice in math, we talk about math, and we go think big math, because whether you are looking to build skills or advance your skills, we are looking to have fun with math. The same thing with literacy and action. We are doing book and author studies to really engage students in things that they are interested in and exploring further. Then we also have stepping up to sixth grade for that transition into middle school. And then all of those themed enrichment courses that are super popular with students, because any time that we can get them engaged in learning in a high-interest area, I'll probably say it this way, the curriculum director shouldn't be saying, but we're sneaking in the learning inside of literacy and math. So when you're cooking with kids, you've got those math skills that you're sneaking in there. So Crafty Kids is another one that is extremely popular with students, along with Spanish STEM, a new course out there. It's a dog's world, because kids are really interested in their canine friends. So there's really fun things to do. But while we're doing all that learning, one thing that we are incorporating this year, and we did incorporate it last year, was iReady. So iReady, all of our students will be participating in the spring diagnostic. And so we will be able, for students that are in summer school, enrolled in summer school, we will be able to carry that forward. And students, along with their summer school teacher, will be able to engage in that online platform to continue learning as part of their summer school piece. And they'll be able to engage in it at school, and with their school district Chromebook, they'll be able to engage in it at home as well. But students need to be enrolled in summer school to engage in that supplemental learning. High school, going into high school, high school is for credits, right? And credits towards graduation. So a big part of our high school programming is credit recovery. And I think we all know that our failure rate this year with virtual learning was higher than we anticipated. Great news is since that we've been out back in person, from Progress Report One, first semester, or second semester, to Progress Report Two, we have cut that failure rate in half across the board in middle school and high school. So that is very encouraging. So with that, we have been planning for credit recovery as outlined within the report, and we have staffing available to make sure that we are supporting and we're getting students back on track with credits. And then the next part is, for our special education students, we have something called extended school year. And so once again, all of our school teams, so led by principals, special education case managers, our program support teachers, have been looking at and monitoring closely our special education students with IEPs to make sure that they've been engaged and they've gotten the services and supports that they need during the school year. If we feel like that a student needs more, they have, once again, been invited and placed in programming specifically designed for them in summer school. And our staffing report shows where we have added staffing to be able to do that. One of the new adds to summer school is a social-emotional learning council, an SCL counselor, who is going to be on staff to help and assist classroom teachers, anybody who would like the social-emotional learning supplemental pieces and incorporating that into their course. And they will also be there to help support students individually as well. So, and then one other thing is our special education department has been super fabulous at writing grants this year. And one grant that's being written right now and could be incorporated into summer school if we're awarded that is our SCL Social Emotional Learning Grant application that is currently being written, I believe, or writing it right now. So that it's focusing on supporting students with autism and students with emotional behavioral disabilities specifically coming up. And then lastly, we are often asked about two exciting programs that are being grant-funded or piloted at our schools. And the first one is at Washington Elementary School. Due to COVID, we were not able to implement it last year through a United Way grant, but we are able to do it this year for kindergartners and first graders. And this is through United Way, and it's called Summer Climb. And so we have dedicated teachers and a staff that are looking to really put into place supports in a fun, engaging, hands-on, minds-on way, once again, to boost up students to get them ready to go. And the same thing at Reed Elementary. Reed has actually been doing this, would be the third summer, that they are going through, and they're doing a math camp and a literacy camp specifically for students who can walk and bike directly to Reed Elementary School for an hour a day and see their teacher and engage in, once again, fun, hands-on, minds-on, engaging activities. Because once again, if a student's not engaged, you're not going to build on the learning. And so that's the key with summer school.
Is there any questions for anyone?
Actually, it's a comment.
Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate the report. I know we had a report earlier, probably in January, February timeframe, so it's nice to get an update on where we are. I like the idea of engagement, because that's so important, as you pointed out, Ms. Conrad. And I'm also very happy to see the reference to iReady. I think that's, I was very impressed with that presentation recently. And I think this will be a great asset to students and to staff to better individualize the learning for students so that they can feel they're going to be successful and they can be engaged and happy and have fun with their learning. So thank you for incorporating that into this report.
Mr. Carnes?
Thank you for that. That was well done. So I have a question and maybe a comment with it. Is there any way to make iReady available for everyone regardless of it? So last year, my son was going from fifth grade to sixth grade. He had enrolled in summer school, so was able to take on iReady, which there was some question if he would if he didn't do that. It was really helpful. And the presentation a couple of weeks ago was wonderful, but it's really helped my kids. And I know in the summertime, they're trying to do maybe some sports activities and some other things. So you're trying to balance a bunch of stuff through the rec. department and other stuff. Maybe that's something they could do early morning or late in the afternoon when they're done, where they could still use that to help them.
So actually, we explored what type of access that we could get with, you know, with iReady for students that are not enrolled in summer school. So as we talked through that, one of the key things is that we really want a teacher and instructor to actually be monitoring as a student is doing that. So when we have a student that's enrolled in summer school, they'll actually be assigned, their teacher is assigned, and they can actually be monitoring and like actually working with that student. If we don't have a student like rostered with a summer school teacher, they're not going to be able to access that outside of summer school. Plus, students that are not enrolled in summer school won't have their Chromebooks. Students will be turning their Chromebooks back in to be like reconditioned, redone, cleaned up, and ready for the fall. And we have a single sign on, it's called Class Link, and I think if you have kids, you've seen that. And when you go in there, everything flows through Class Link. So we really need students enrolled in summer school to be able to have access to iReady.
I have one more question. Have we noticed any attendance maybe going up for this year compared to other years, where people are trying to help maybe make up for some areas where they were struggling to try to catch back up at all?
So when we look at summer school enrollment as compared to, like if you look at summer school eighteen, nineteen, so 2018, you compare it to last year, 2020. 2020 was way down, because we only offered virtual summer school. And so this summer, it's up, but not up to the level of summer 2019. So there's a couple different factors in that. First off, we have families and students that are fatigued, right? And they're going, like right now, I just really need to take some time, recalibrate, reset, and be able to do that. So that's number one. The second piece is that we're anticipating like our high school enrollment, through credit recovery's going to go up, because once again, that has to do with graduation. And you can see from staffing numbers, we have that up from there. And then the third thing is, is that programs like Reed and programs that are being offered at Washington, we cannot count those students in summer school enrollment. And so they may have, they can have access through the school system, because they'll be enrolled with a teacher, but they can't be counted towards summer school enrollment, because it's a grant-funded program that's not open to every single student within the Oshkosh Area School District. It's for a targeted group of students at a school.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wright? I just have a comment. As a parent in the district, I've got to learn a lot recently about the district. And I just want to commend you on how you guys measure what students need extra supports, and then how you're going above and beyond to find grants so that these students can get that extra access to those supports throughout the summer. And I think those services are just wonderful. And without the hard work that you guys are doing, I'm sure we wouldn't be seeing the significant advances in the results that this district's been seeing. So that takes a lot of hard work and a lot of effort. And I'm just thankful that I've been able to learn about all that hard work you guys have been doing. So thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. It was a wonderful report.
Thank you for coming. Thanks, guys.
Go ahead.
Mr. Nihans, if you'll please come forward to provide us an update related to summer
Good evening. So my report today was about the updates for our safety and security portion of the referendum from November. Bray Architects helped us put a bidding process together, and we've got, the safety, security portion of the referendum is split into two summers worth of work. The first summer is six buildings, and it's not quite extensive work in each building, but work that needs to get done. And then we've got the larger work that's going to happen next summer that'll be at both of the high schools, where we're adding on a significant portion to Oshkosh North and doing a fairly extensive remodel at Oshkosh West. So the six buildings that are impacted on this part of the bid are Carroll Trager Elementary and Middle School, we got Franklin Elementary, Emmeline Cook Elementary, Lakeside Elementary, and South Park Middle School. And I would like to clarify with the board, in my report, it did say Reed Elementary. There was a mistake. I didn't catch that. It is Emmeline Cook, not Reed. So I apologize for that. So again, the work that's going to be done is we're going to have a revamping of the visitor entrances, the main entrances at all the buildings, along with the main offices. And we're going to create a safe and secure vestibule and visitor entrance protocol in all of the buildings. So that's, and some of the buildings may have a little bit further work done to continue the safe, secure ability of that building, depending on how that building's laid out. We did end up with three general contractors that put in bids. Of the three bids, Myron Construction was the most favorable for the district. So that is the bid right now that we are pursuing. Bray Architects is in the process of vetting that bid out to make sure that everything is what we think it is. And we will be, once that process gets done, we will be signing contracts for... we will be signing contracts for, for that to proceed. The, the bid on that price was just over 1.2 million for, for that final bid. Does anyone have any questions?
Just for the knowledge of the board, we will be bringing that as a resolution forward to you for formal board approval prior to us signing any, any contracts related to that.
I have a question related to that. So I think Dr. Cartwright may have just kind of alluded to that a little bit, though we didn't talk about it in advance. I had a question about why we would lean on Bray Architects to, to handle the bidding process when, from what I understand, we have, we've, we've been provided bids before that the district has managed and has utilized that process. So can you just kind of explain why we would do that in this situation and the relevance of it?
Sure. So what, what is typical, typically done within a referendum project, and, and these are larger capital projects, is you, you end up with two, three entities in essence that, that are part of this process. You have our architect, who is responsible for the design and then the oversight of making sure that all the work being done is to the specifications that were approved in the plan that, that they created and that the state approved. So you have the architect, you'll have the general contractor, and then you'll have the district. Sometimes you'll have an owner's rep, a, a kind of a situation. We, we have a situation that we have already discussed with the school board that we have our own owner's rep in-house. So the architect helps us within the RFP process to make sure that we're vetting out the general contractors. They help us make sure that they're completely vetted and bonded properly, that the background checks are all, are all checked out. They do all that legwork on the front end before they even get to come in and solicit for a bid. So they help us through all that process. They, they are intimately aware of all the different general contractors that are in the state. They work with many of them. So it's, it's also another double check. And in the whole process, as we move through this, the way it works is once the bid, once the work begins, the general contractor will do, their contracts are generally paid out on a percentage of work that gets completed along the way. And they'll submit their invoices to the architect. The architect will verify that that amount of work has been done and that it's, it's been done appropriately. And then it goes to the district. And Mr. Fox and myself will ensure that, and Dr. Gunlock will ensure that that work has truly been done and we approve of that. And then we would send it to PMA, who is our financial consultant on, on the referendum, to make sure that that invoice thing gets paid.
Sure. Anyone else have any new questions yet? Okay, then I have one more. So one of the things that's important to me as one individual person on the board, as an elected leader, is that the work that is brought forward by the referendum is historically or is beneficial to the, to local workers. And so when I, I'm, I'm familiar with C.D. Smith. I'm familiar with Myron Construction because they're, they're more local. And so I'm not as familiar with, with Capel Diedrich and such. But I guess of these bids that we received, are we comfortable with the amount of employability of, of local people that these companies provide in regards to the work that they're going to be doing in the community?
Yes, we, we do. And there is one thing we looked at. Each of the three companies, the general contractors that submitted, all were basically using the same subcontractors. When we looked at the different, the electrical, the plumbing, any of those different subcontractors they're going to have, they're all roughly using the same, the same subcontractors and they're all fairly local companies. We, we did have two other companies that did come to, we have pre, a requirement within to put a, submit a bid was to come to a pre-bid walkthrough of all the buildings. So Bray could have a conversation and really show them the specs and offer them an opportunity to ask any questions upfront. So we, it helps vet the, the bidding process out on, on this part of the, end of the process. And unfortunately, neither of them submitted. But one of those companies was, was a very local company. But ultimately, they didn't submit a bid to, to go in. And in my experience, that happens fairly often, especially when we're talking about a little bit larger project like this. It, it gets harder for a smaller, more local company to start competing with some of these larger companies because they, they understand that this is an ends to another means. Everyone's looking for the two big middle school project, the middle school project and the elementary project. So that can have a, play a factor in this as well.
Sure. And then my, my final question, unless no one else, unless someone has any. Sorry, thank you. Is more, also is, you know, we're, we're using public dollars to, to build schools, right? And I think it's, one of the other elements that I think is really important is that those that we choose to, to be the general contractor and their, and their, their subcontractors, I think it's really important that there's a little, that there's a level of hiring and training and creating safety and expertise as an apprenticeship within all of those. I have this idea that it, it would be awesome for one of our high schoolers that graduate, you know, from Oshkosh West or Oshkosh North or even Oshkosh Lourdes, to be able to have this apprenticeship working on building new schools in Oshkosh. And, and so I'm just wondering if there was any factor into that type of aspect of, of the bidding process in regards to how they, they vet their subcontractors and how they train and build up their, their employer, their employees?
I would have to look into that to, to verify whether, whether that was part of the, the RFP and part of that process or not. That, that's a little bit more in the, the fine details than what I, I have on the tip of my head right now.
And if it's something that you want to take a couple of minutes to do that and share that information, that would, that would be wonderful. Obviously, I wasn't necessarily expecting, I put you on the spot. I hadn't, I hadn't talked to you about this, and so I'm sorry for that. But I just, it was just this, this vision of having, you know, our students be involved in creating something.
Yeah, that's cool.
Would be this awesome story.
Mr. Preschel, if you, if you may, if you'll allow Mr. Nihans to check into that a little bit and to report back out at the next board meeting.
Sure. And I'll, in the future, I'll do a better job of letting you know a little bit in advance of my, of my questions as well, especially something like that that you might not be looking for.
I do.
Thank you.
I should have a comment just to add to that, I guess. As a person that's, family's had a construction business in the area for over 35 years, right now in particular, it's very hard to find subs to do any jobs. So that's going to be some of the difficult processes as well. It's just very hard to find people to even pour a slab. There's so much work.
Sure.
So that's just a little comment.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nihans.
All right. Give me a second here. All right. So we are now on to committee reports. Now normally, these reports are done by the committee chairs, by the previous chairs. But in this case, the previous chairs are no longer sitting on the board. And so we've now appointed new chairs that will be providing those reports. So today, we will be getting a facilities and finance report from Mrs. Hershog and a policy and governance report from Ms. Selagi and a legislative report from Ms. Carlin. So Ms. Hershog, please proceed.
Thank you.
Dr. Hershog.
The Facilities and Finance Committee met on April 15th, 2021, at 8:30, chaired by then Kelly Olmsted, then Chair Kelly Olmsted. The members present were Hershog, Nihans, Olmsted, Evans, and Fox. One of the items on the agenda was the budget variance report. The month's variance report showed that the budget was running on track. Our Fund 10 slash 27 revenues are still running slightly behind projections. Our Fund 10 slash 27 expenses continue to run ahead of trend. The Fund 10 expenses are, you know, almost 4.8% lower than the trend through February. And the Fund 27 expenses are slightly at 6%, are lower than the trend for the same period. I'm not going to read this word for word. I'm just going to give you the highlights in the interest of time here. The district moved to dental, to a, moved dental to a self-funded plan as of January 1st, 2021. Mr. Nihans is estimating that there will be a surplus at the end of the fiscal year and that Mr. Nihans would like to aim for January of 2022 for moving the health insurance to a self-funded plan. Due to the current budget running a surplus, we have begun the process to engineer and install a multi-use turf field with lights at North High School. This will allow sports team to, teams to practice during inclement, I think the word, weather, that we wouldn't normally be able to do. The light cost will be run out of the Recreation Department, which will help community programming for night events. This field will be for JV, freshman band practice and sports practices that are not at the senior level. And the bids will probably go out at the end of May with the completion date of September of 2021. There was a request for a future agenda item of looking into compensation for coaches as well as music staff. This has been questioned for a couple of years, as well as those who oversee performances and would include both middle and high school. The Facilities and Finance Committee would like to see a consolidation study done on future performance spaces. That would include not only athletics, but also music, art, music and drama in particular. And Mr. Nihans will work on this, to bring the bids to the board. A referendum update was another agenda item. The referendum work is continuing on schedule, as we just heard from Mr. Nihans. Bray and our core planning committee have completed designs and engineering for the schools, receiving new secure entrances. And bids will be, will be out, as we also just heard. There was a request to see staff reports on how the referendum dollars are being used and see, we need to be good stewards of the dollars that the community has provided us. And so that was where that came from. A written report would be acceptable. They don't need to be long reports, but just to keep the board and the community up to date. Dr. Gunlock is working with the City of Oshkosh to set up neighborhood meetings for those impacted by schools that will be under construction. Another agenda item was the ARPA funds and budget implications. These are the funds from the federal government related to COVID. The release of another round of stimulus money due to COVID-19 has been released and is awaiting approval from the Joint Finance Committee. The latest round of funding called ARPA, A-R-P-A, is expected to bring our district slightly less than 13.5 million dollars. Once approved by the Joint Finance Committee, it will bring the total from all COVID-related stimulus for the district to 20,889,161 dollars. The district actually received a little less than this because the first stimulus also included funds for the private schools in our totals. The district has already spent or allocated the first round of 1,359,657.06. The next meeting will be on Thursday, May 20th, at 8:30 in this room. We'll look at compensation for extracurricular and co-curricular and we'll provide an overview for the woofer funds and, and introduction to 101 budgeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I have an update for the Policy and Governance Committee. This committee meets, sorry, let me look at my notes. I had them up just a second ago. I just wanted to kind of give the public some background as well, there are new members. We use Niola. They send us some policy updates. And what we do is we go over, if you look in our board packet pages, I think this covers page 58 to page 99. All the things in green are the updates that Niola gives us that we would be adding. And all the things in red are the things that we would be striking. So with that background in mind, there was one policy that we did pull that we are not voting on tonight. So it was not in our board packet, and I will give it summary first. It is policy 0143.2. It's Board Member Information Requests. And this is a new policy that Niola recommended to us. This is a policy that establishes protocols for dealing with board member requests for information, whereby it distinguishes between those requests, which would be made as a public record by a citizen from those authorized by the board and require administrative research or investigation. So the committee discussed this at great length, and we did not feel comfortable adopting this new policy until we had the new board in place. So we moved that to our May meeting. So when we meet, when the Policy and Governance Committee meets in May, we will discuss that policy again and whether we are comfortable adopting it. So again, it just distinguishes the difference between when a board member asks for records and information versus the citizen public record request. So otherwise, all the other policies that I have to report on were in our board packet. I will try to give a brief summary of them. The first one was head lice. Well, I guess I should give the numbers. 8451 was about head lice. This was updated to better reflect the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics and the National Association of School Nurses' guidance on how to treat head lice in schools. Policy 2411 was about school counseling and academic and career planning. So we added a legal citation that referenced the Department of Public Instruction's Administrative Code, which requires districts to inform parents about academic and career planning services for their students. Policy 2416 is about student privacy and parental access to information. Policy 2430 is district-sponsored clubs and activities. This policy was revised to include language prohibiting or requiring permission for the use of district names, logos, mascot, or any other property of the district in connecting with fundraising. There were a few policies that had this same theme come up. Policy 5895 that we'll vote on is about student employment. This policy's updates include adding an option for the board to serve as a work permit issuing authority and removes the reference for the superintendent to prepare the administrative guidelines. Policies 1213, 3213, and 4213, which all have similar numbers because they have to do with different levels of staffing. This one has to do with student supervision and welfare. These policies were revised to clarify the restriction on staff posting student photos or other depictions from public events on social media. So we'll vote on that tonight. Policy 3220, Staff Evaluation Educator Effectiveness. There was a revision to this policy, including removing the reference to the board authority for discharge, clarifying the job description and evaluating process and adding a statutory citation. Policy 5511 is about dress and grooming. Revisions to this policy were made to provide a more detailed and descriptive policy and process while maintaining viewpoint neutrality. The policy recommends a process whereby any application of the policy resulting in a student being temporarily excluded or required to remove an article of clothing deemed to violate the policy be reviewed administratively before the action is pursued. It's recommended that when there could be a concern regarding protected speech, as detailed in the policy's revision, districts should consult with local legal counsel while reviewing and adopting updated dress code requirements. Policy 5517.01 had to do with bullying. We added some changes to the language there. Policy 5540.01 had to do with investigations involving suspected child abuse. This policy's been clarified in regard to instances where law enforcement would request that parents not be contacted. And we added a reference to another policy to explain the reason why for that. Policy 9700 is relations with non-school affiliated groups. Again, going back to using the district name, logo, mascot. Policy 9700.01 is about advertising and commercial activities, which again, this policy revised language about using the district name, logo, or mascot. Policy 5113 was the Open Enrollment Program. This policy was revised to add a new section clause that allows the policy to adapt to the implementation of emergency rules or measures that are put in place at the state or federal level and which may impact certain provisions in the open enrollment policy. Inclusion of this language is recommended because of the technical nature of open enrollment, especially open enrollment appeals, which rely heavily on district policy language. I'm almost done. Promise. Two more. So 0100, this one, we, it was just definitions. We, we added definitions for school nurses, school officials, as well as cross-reference, references for the definitions of board and district. And the final one, 0131.1 was bylaws, bylaws and policies. The bylaw was revised to include an acknowledgement that applicable laws or regulations, including temporary emergency orders or mandates... including temporary emergency orders or mandates, might supersede the bylaws and policies in certain instances. While it's not a change in legal status of bylaws and policies, that was something that the current pandemic had raised questions about the potential conflict between legal mandates and standing policies. So that one was recommended to us. Our future meeting is, our next meeting is scheduled for, oh, May 10th. Sorry, May 10th at 8:30 in this room. And we have only about six items to go over, so as of now.
Thank you. Ms. Carlin?
I'm also going to do a high-level summary of our meeting and for the greater good of the new school board members. I wanted you to know that these notes are in your Board Packet in another folder if you ever want to refer to them and read it in its entirety. The Legislative Committee met on Thursday, April 22nd at 8:30 a.m. In attendance were Mr. Evans, Ms. Carlin, Dr. Barb Herzog, Dr. Cartwright, and Andy Jones. We talked about the fact that the state budget is currently being discussed at various levels of government, and that very few in-person hearings are taking place. A virtual statewide budget hearing is scheduled for April 28th. Dr. Herzog is registered to speak on behalf of WASB, as she is currently serving in a board position. And WASB stands for Wisconsin Association of School Boards, if you did not know that yet. Dr. Herzog will convey the information or ask questions for the OASD as well. We also talked about how referendums for borrowing approval in District around the state dipped this last election. And the committee decided that it was important, we talked about that we need to pay attention to information about micro-private schools and their funding, as well as support legislation for two funding windows in an effort to capture funding dollars for those students who leave the District and then return after funding has been allocated. We also talked about paying closer attention to the private school voucher program and open enrollment program. The District not only funds special education, or, excuse me, special education students who leave for other districts, but we also pay additional dollars in the voucher program for them. The committee supports seeking transparency to the public in terms of how much money is going towards the voucher program. The committee would also support a recommendation for a change to be made to the tax code as a $10,000 tax credit is currently being given to families that have students attending private schools. The committee suggested that the new Legislative Committee, after the reorganization meeting, we would consider resending a past legislative resolution regarding the voucher program that was written about five years ago. And we also talked about crafting a letter to State Superintendent Jill Underley to support some of our initiatives. We did not have any, we normally have updates from committee members about local legislators, because we all meet with legislators that we are selected to meet with between meetings. And nobody had done that because of basically the pandemic. We also talked about ARP funds, American Rescue Plan Act. And COVID funding relief is being released to different school districts, and it will provide $13.5 million in Oshkosh. It was suggested that the committee watch for legislation that may reduce state funding in the future. A reduction in funding would impact the budget significantly going forward. The federal government has dollars for supporting COVID relief, and it should not take the place of any other funding. Let's see, the executive team is currently working with Mr. Nihans on where the funding will go and making sure it is sustainable and doesn't create a funding cliff for the Board. We are also, the team is also working on creating a list of one-time expenditures. Then we talked about our focus areas that we have been kind of going through, and these are mental health and accountability for transparency of verification process by allowing school districts to validate that students using the private school vouchers are within the school district's boundaries on an annual basis. There is a legislative breakfast on Friday at CISA 6, or, I'm sorry, I think it's at the Convention Center.
At the Convention Center.
Yes, Dr. Herzog and I will be attending that at 8, from 8:30 to 9:30. Our next meeting is May 27th, and we will be talking about, well, Dr. Herzog has agreed to give a presentation on the virtual budget hearing that you attend on the 28th. We will also give an update on the legislative breakfast. We'd also like to assign the new committee members to legislators to schedule periodic meeting dates and times, and often we invite them to our meetings. And we will also spend some time walking the new members of the committee on how to sign up for certain notifications to get legislative updates. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. I didn't miss any reports from anyone? All right, are typically, so the next spots on the agenda are related to non-agenda-related public forum and agenda-related public forum. I have been informed that we have no one signed up this evening for that. So we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is now currently the Consent Resolution Agenda. Is there any of these agenda items in the Consent Resolution Agenda that anyone would like to be pulled for individual consideration?
8B.
8B, all right, so we will pull-
B, B, and Bob.
Sure. So that's 8B in the personnel.
Correct.
And that's retirements.
Correct.
And Dr. Cartwright has requested that we pull 8C for administrative appointment. Is there any other requests to pull items for individual consideration? Okay. So I would like a motion to consider all items of the Consent Resolution Agenda except for 8B and 8C.
So move?
Second.
Moved by Wyman, seconded by Solaji. All right. Now, if I am understanding this correctly, I have to read this whole thing.
Yes, you do.
All right. So-
I thought we could make a motion to waive reading.
No, no, I don't want it.
Okay.
I think it's good for the public to know what we're voting.
I agree.
This one is fine. I mean, if we're looking at, you know, twice the alphabet, maybe we might want to think about it, but we're good, so. For the Consent Agenda, the Board has been furnished with background information on each item or as discussed at a previous meeting. This will be acted upon in one vote without discussion. If a board member wanted to discuss any item, it would be pulled for Consent Agenda and be voted on separately. We've done this already. The Board will consider approval of number one, minutes of March 22nd, 2021, Special Board Meeting. Number two, minutes of March 24th, 2021, Regular Board Meeting. Number three, minutes of March 24th, 2021, Executive Session at the Regular Board Meeting. Number four, minutes of March 29th, 2021, Special Board Meeting. Five, minutes of April 14th, 2021's Regular Board Meeting. Number six, minutes of April 14th, 2021, Executive Session at Regular Board Meeting. Number seven, bills payable. Number eight, personnel, A, appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, and salaries. Number nine, 2021, 2022 Board Meeting Calendar. Ten, 2021, Summer School Staffing. Number eleven, Niola Policy Updates. A, 0100 Definitions. B, 0131.1 Bylaws and Policies. C, 1,213 Student Supervision and Welfare. D, 2,411 School Counseling and Academic and Career Planning. E, 2,416 Student Privacy Parental Access to Information. F, 2,430 District-Sponsored Club and Activities. G, 3,213 Student Supervision and Welfare. H, 3,320 Staff Evaluation and Educator Effectiveness. I, 4,213 Student Supervision and Welfare. J, 5,113 Open Enrollment Inter-District. K, 5,511 Dress and Grooming. L, 5,517.01 Bullying. M, 5,540.01 Investigations Involving Suspected Child Abuse. N, 5,895 Student Employment. O, 8,451 Pediculosis Head Lice. P, 9,700 Relations With Non-School Affiliated Groups. Q, 9,700.01 Advertising and Commercial Activities. Please call the roll.
Carnes?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
The ayes have it, resolution carries.
Thank you. All right, now, moving on to individually considered resolutions. I would look for a motion to bring Resolution 8B to the table.
I so move.
Second.
Herzog? Carnes? Is there any discussion? Let me, first let me read the resolution, thank you. Resolution 8 reads, "To be resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the retirements as filed with the Board of Education, the Secretary of the Board, to the Board of Education, as followed. Retirements Brenda Barnett, cross-categorical teacher at Jefferson Elementary, has been with, well, we'll do this, Marlene Gunlock, principal on assignment, and Kay Rerig.
Rerig.
Rerig, grade four teacher with Roosevelt Elementary School. Any questions, comments, go.
Mr. Peschall, thank you. I had asked if this be pulled. I think it's very important that we recognize the contributions of retirees at the time of retirement to the students, the staff, and our community. And so Brenda Barnett is retiring as a cross-categorical teacher, having served in the district for six years. Marlene Gunlock, also known as Marcy, is retiring as principal on assignment, having served as principal and teacher in the district in a career that spans 31 years in our district. And finally, Kay Rerig is retiring as a fourth-grade teacher from Roosevelt Elementary School, having served the district for a total of 30 years. And I just want to wish each of these retirees tonight a long, healthy, and happy retirement, and thank them for their contributions to our district and the learning of our students.
All right. Any other comments? All right, please call the roll.
Peschall?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Ayes have it, resolution carries.
All right. Next resolution for consideration reads, "To be resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the administrative appointments and salary schedule as filed with the Secretary of the Board of Education." Looking for a motion.
So move.
Second.
All right. Dr. Cartwright, can I provide you the opportunity to give us some feedback on this one?
I appreciate that, thank you very much, Board. I'm very proud to present to you Mr. Pitch. Mr. Pitch, if you'll please come forward. Mr. Pitch is currently one of our employees, and he works at Webster Stanley Middle School. And I actually hired him into the district from out of district. He has an extensive background knowledge related to curriculum instruction, as well as for student self-regulation related to behaviors and such as well. And I would just like to invite Mr. Pitch, just to say any words that he would like to present to the Board tonight.
Yeah, I'm just very honored to be here tonight. Born and raised Oshkosh here. Just very honored to be able to serve the community and continue to just help our students continue to move forward. So very grateful, very thankful for this opportunity to be sitting in front of you today. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Peschall, thank you.
All right, wonderful. Looking for any other thoughts, questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
The ayes have it, resolution carries.
All right. Let me do some, all right, so I, at this point, at this point, we've been going for just under two hours. And so I'm going to call for a quick five-minute recess, and then we're going to move back into workshops with Mr. Nitski. All right? So, do I need a motion for recess?
I know.
I thought you did, but I could be wrong.
All right, then I would-
Yeah.
Yes.
You do.
All right, then I would entertain a motion for a five-minute recess.
Motion to recess for five minutes.
Second.
All right, is there discussion?
Yep.
All right, is there any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Resolution carries, five-minute break.
All right, so please be back in five minutes.
...is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly, and involved.
All right, I'm going to call us back to order at 7:55 p.m. We are going to move ahead into the workshops portion of tonight's meeting. I am going to, I'm going to make a kind of a quick, another change to the agenda. Kind of looking at it, the superintendent search is probably the element that we really want Ted to put his greatest amount of focus on. And so we're going to start with the superintendent's search, and then we're going to follow up with the high-performing board training.
All right, so good evening, everyone. My name is Ted Nitski, and I'm the CEO at CISA 6, which is an Oshkosh nonprofit, working with 39 school districts across the region. We've now, we do superintendent searches as well for our member districts. Oshkosh is a member district, and we've been working with the Oshkosh Area School District since 1966, when we were incorporated. Tonight, what I, and I had asked Bob, Board Chair, I appreciate you switching the agenda because more conscious of the fact that we've got a tight timeline here for posting. We'd like to get this position posted by Friday. All the board members have completed their interviews. We had 931 people participate in the online survey, and we boiled down all those themes tonight for you to review. From those themes, then, we would write the job posting very specifically around that, and I'm going to walk you through that process tonight. My style is you can interrupt and ask me questions whenever you want to, don't wait till the end. I'd rather address those pieces, and like all good teachers, if you ask me a question that I know the answer's on the next slide, I'm just going to go, it's on the next slide. Okay? So looking at the process here, just want to make sure that, you know, what you guys had contracted for and asked for, it's really four steps that we're going to do tonight. We're going to review the market and the posting. Because we've been running superintendent searches and facilitating and supporting them around the region, we have a really good idea of what's in the market. Talk to you a little bit about the qualities in the ideal candidate that were identified by you and the stakeholder groups in the community. Solidify the process for tonight, and then finalize the timeline. Basically, we wanted you in a position here where you, at your first board meeting in June, are hiring your next super- Uh, basically, we wanted you in a position here where you, uh, at your first board meeting in June are hiring your next superintendent. Um, and I believe that's not, uh, an crazy aggressive timeline, because, um, school districts the size of Oshkosh don't often open, and when they do open, there's a whole lot of people who've been thinking about, I'm gonna apply in Oshkosh. So, we've all gotten phone calls, uh, we've got already four or five people who are anxious to apply, uh, from the region and the state, so we're feeling pretty good about that. Okay? So, um, this is just from one of the, uh, more recent processes up in Little Shoot. Um, because what we do is we do an executive process, we don't do a traditional seven board members, each rotate asking questions. What we do in advance is we identify those four questions that you were asked today, or yes, or last week, as well as the community. We develop a profile, and then we coach the candidates to come in and address all of that in a presentation. So, one of the things that is like the number one, uh, request, and it came up in every single category, was someone with strong communication skills who understood our region. Strong communication skills who understood our region. So, I just sharing with you Joel Rail, who's the president of the Little Shoot School Board, and this is similar feedback. What they, what the other school boards have really liked is, you know, the candidate comes in here, um, after meeting with a stakeholder group, and you all introduce yourselves, and then they, for one hour, walk through with evidence all of the ways they've done everything you've asked for. So if you want someone who is like community orientated, or is a people person, you know, they don't just get to stand up here and say like, I'm a people person, and people really like me. What they have to do instead is they have to demonstrate like, these are my communication strategies. Here's how I communicate with staff. These are videos I make. This is examples of, you know, newsletters. I work strongly with the communications team. If we want people who are highly engaged in the community, obviously, we want people who are gonna come and say like, I've been a member of Rotary in my community for fourteen years, or I'm in Lions Club, or I participate in our school's foundation for fundraising, and I do this, and my family does this. So you wanna see the evidence, and we ask them to prep and, and provide that for you. So, this is your team, um, that's me, uh, and then Tara Villa Lobos, who you met today. She is the superintendent of schools in the Holy Hill area school district, which is north of Milwaukee. And then Mark Hanson, who is the superintendent of the Elm Brook School District, that is the Elm, uh, the Brookfield Elm Grove School District, uh, in Milwaukee suburbs. Uh, this is the team I, we chose, uh, because we wanted people from outside of the region, but yet who are highly active and, and engaged. Uh, Mark, myself, Tara, all engaged in state-level activities, uh, you know, WASDs, OSAs, uh, WACD, active politically, uh, well-networked, all three of us teach in some level of postgraduate program and certification program. All three of us mentor and recruit and, uh, work with, you know, also for principals, et cetera. So, well, I feel really confident about our team, and I, I hope you had a good experience with them when you interviewed with Mark and Tara. So, the current market analysis, there's really four pieces here for you to really recognize. And this is where I get in conflict sometimes with some of the other, uh, recruiting firms, where they come in and they say, whoa, we're really excited, we'll get you forty-five, fifty applicants. What they really don't do is they don't really don't break down for you that of those forty-five, forty applicants, there are maybe seven or eight truly qualified people in that pool. We've had people apply for superintenances who are, you know, choir teachers in rural school districts without a license. We don't count them, uh, we bring to you the qualified candidates. Right now, what we're seeing for you and Oshkosh is there's a small pool, it's not very deep, but there are already five or six, um, sitting superintendents from around the state and region who are actively interested in our calling and asking questions about, um, your district. When we get into the second level, the pool has a little more depth when we talk about assistant superintendents. There's some very strong candidates, um, in the Fox Valley, uh, southeastern Wisconsin, and Dane County, where you have systems your size, uh, with very similar demographics. You know, we've got some candidates, uh, that we're going to be heavily recruiting after tonight, who come from majority-minority school district, majority-poverty school districts, people with a depth of experience and community engagement. Um, and then the, with, there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of candidates who are school administrators, principals, CNI people, director levels, et cetera. Um, our goal is to bring you five highly qualified candidates for review, uh, when we go into closed session in a few weeks. Um, one of the pieces with our process is, you know, to be transparent, there's a danger that we have to worry about, where you, you know, if we were to say, these are all the people that, um, have applied for the position, um, if we were to say that and indicate that upfront, we will immediately limit our pool, because people are putting their careers at risk and their reputations at risk just by applying, as we know. Some schools, some systems do those things, uh, we don't, we, we think that's a, that's gonna be a risk for us. So that's kind of the market analysis, uh, that we've seen. Um, you know, and depending on the size of the system, we will have anywhere between thirty to forty, uh, applicants. Um, and then little tiny rural school systems get, you know, twelve, thirteen, uh, applicants. So I'm gonna pause for a second. Yeah, Steph, any questions?
Yeah. So, um, what I, when I spoke to Tara today, I really liked that she said the goal is to get five highly qualified candidates, but that's not a hard number. So if you only have three really great candidates, and the other two you think are not so great, and she said you guys would just go top three. It does not have to be five, it might even be six, but I like that it's a, you know, we're not gonna just get five if we only know that three are gonna make it. You know what I mean?
Correct.
I like that.
And as part of the process, what we do when we come to you is we actually rank order them based upon how they meet the criteria. So, in a moment, when I show you those things, basically, Mark, Tara, and I create a rubric. We do rapid interview, uh, with, you know, we, we will interview up to eight to ten people. We will go through and score that based upon, you know, the criteria needed by the district and the system, what you've identified. And then when we bring them to you, we say like, boom, here's the, we create a profile of that candidate, and then we say like, here's where they meet your criterion, and we work our way up to those, to those top five, and then down to, you know, five, four, three, two, one.
Perfect.
And to be really honest with you, Steph, what we see is that, you know, the distance between one and five in those pools is significant, as is the distance between one and forty. It's like another continent. Any other questions or clarifying pieces for that? Okay. Um, your ideal candidate, what we did was, we sent out a swift survey. I've gotta tell you, your communications, uh, team here is fantastic. Uh, Sherry Wertz has been phenomenal to work with, um, very swift, very quick, very easy. I also have to tell you that I really admire the strategy of posting everything in multiple languages, to eliminate any opportunity for anyone to feel excluded. Um, we had one, um, person in Spanish respond, um, none of the other languages, but still, I think what you're doing as a district and as a, as a board, by putting that out there, is you're, you're, you're putting an open hand out there of inclusivity. Uh, that is rare, and I've worked in school districts with, uh, diverse populations, and it's, it's a heavy lift just to get signage in schools, let alone for you to communicate in those pieces, so I applaud you for that effort.
Does Katie back there?
No, I know. Do whatever, I didn't wanna embarrass her, so.
Oh, embarrassing.
See? She's all red now. Well done, Katie. Um, so she's been great to work with, with our team. One of the things that CISA does with Katie and Sherry and you guys is like, we've created a district profile. We will help write the press releases, we'll put all those things in place. Now, obviously, 'cause you have the horsepower here to do it, really what we're doing is we're giving her templates, she's filling them in, making them unique, so she's done a phenomenal job. So the key themes that were asked you, or everyone was asked the same four questions. What are the skills needed in the next superintendent? What experiences? What core values? And then what are their priorities? Um, again, having, you know, gone through the nine hundred and thirty-one pieces as well as the board, I'm gonna share with you how we boiled them down. Now, one thing as a board, I would ask you, is if your exact words aren't up there, remember that they were put in with nine hundred and thirty-one other samples, and put into a, a, a specific talking point. Those of you who are new on the board know that, uh, don't know this, but I'm wearing a blue suit, and that's a red tie, and, and we'll explain that in a little bit. Like, getting into semantics is gonna get us into trouble. So, these are the core skills that were expected. Um, and again, we boiled these down, uh, from this whole list, and if anyone wants a printed copy of what the entire community said, you can have it. But communication, uh, hundreds of times, that word came up. If not, is that the only thing? Communication skills, collaboration skills, uh, being strategic, um, listening, feedback circles, being trustworthy. The people person came up over and over in one way or another. Student-focused, um, experienced as an executive, uh, that was very big, that came up in every single category. Hire a sitting superintendent, hire someone with a lot of experience, hire someone who understands the region. Um, ability to speak and be articulate, use of data and decisions, continuous improvement mindset, visionary, and then focuses on relationships. One of the things that happens in the interview process with the candidates is, once you boil down who your three are, we then become their advocate. So Mark, Tara, and I start to meet with them, and we start to coach them. Bring your evidence, let's see your presentations, let's walk through this. We make them come up to Oshkosh, we walk them around. We want them to sit here and, and tell the world if they're an Oaks person or a Hughes person. We want that level of intimacy for the community. Right? So if there's any Oaks people or Hughes people, I think you know what I'm talking about. So when they do their presentations, what they're gonna speak to is, here's my evidence, here's how it relates to your community, here's how I build relationships, here's how I focus on continuous improvement. Okay? So again, very different than, tell us, you know, if you were a bird, what kind of a bird would you be? And then have them answer that. Okay? So these are the core skills that, after tonight, this is what the job description will be built upon, this is what they will interview to demonstrate, and then this is what they will be expected to, as they're hired, that you will evaluate them against, those qualities. Okay? Any questions up there? Any glaring absences from what you shared in your interviews? Chris, that's my twelve seconds of wait time. After that, I, I just fall asleep. Okay? These are the experiences, um, understanding of the region, over and over and over again in the stakeholder group, we, we saw the words Wisconsin, Wisconsinite, Midwestern, um, different pieces like that. Obviously, wanting some level of superintendent experience, uh, a unifier. So again, imagine the candidate comes in here and shows how they have dealt with conflict or inherited situations, and then brought people together, developed coalitions, worked with teams, developed their existing team, exited people, all of those different pieces. One of the things I thought was really interesting, and you had a lot of teachers, obviously, who, who participated, is they wanted someone who could come in and talk about who they were as a teacher. And there were multiple comments, which I thought was really wild, of please don't hire people who raced into administration. And I thought that was interesting, that was a unique Oshkosh type of thing, right? So, don't hire somebody who taught for two years and then became assistant principal and principal. Have somebody who's got a breadth of experience, working at different levels or at one level. And that was just a unique thing. So when they interview, we're gonna ask them, tell us what you taught. Where did you teach? What did you learn as a teacher? So that the staff has relevance back to them. Leadership at all levels is another thing, because of your core stakeholder groups. Remember, you, in a district this size, fifty to fifty-two percent of the employees are not certified, they're not in classrooms, they're support people, they're in cafeterias, they're in libraries, they're in, you know, doing maintenance, cutting the grass, painting, plumbing, all of those things. They want someone who understands them as well. And as a board, I think one of the things that you wanna be highly cognizant of is that those staff are the cheerleaders in the internal communication structure for your whole community. Your staff's busy, the teachers are busy all day long, the other people are moving around, they're talking, they're posting, they're doing all kinds of stuff. Again, use of data, strategic planning experience, and then the base one there, experience in similar-sized systems. People were very quick to point out, please don't hire somebody who's run a school district of like eleven hundred. Okay? So again, with the experiences, this is our little rubric, when we go through the applications, if there's some very highly qualified person in a very small system, we may screen them, but obviously, we're gonna look for people who have experiences working in a system. And again, Wisconsin's unique, there are only ten school districts, you know, in this window, and one's Milwaukee, and others Madison, Kenosha, and then you get to Oshkosh, Appleton, Oshkosh, Sheboygan, et cetera. So we know where to draw from. Thoughts, questions, clarifications? Okay, values. Again, and these aren't judgment calls, but this is Oshkosh, and I think this is Midwest, and I think this is kind of like, these are core values that we would want in everyone, right? We want somebody who's perseverant, who's compassionate, who's empathetic, who's respectful, caring, honest. Um, I do, again, you know, if anything has, has gone really well in the cultural talking points of this community in the last four or five years, it's equity. Right? I don't go to a lot of school districts where they say, and equity is like, this isn't in rank order, past honesty, trust, or honesty, equity, and trust, the rest are just random in there. But those were the three top things they wanted in the next superintendent. And one of the things I'm just gonna provide some color for is honesty. Like, multiple people over and over and over again said, even tell us if things aren't well or bad. Um, so that's a good piece to set up the new leadership team with. Child-centered, perseverant, humble, stewardship, innovative, uh, and then focused on the community. Any values up there?
Are these, um, from the survey, or are they from us, or both? It's a combination?
Both.
Okay.
Both.
That's my thought.
So what happened was I, the reason our team was split, so the two, uh, Mark and Tara interviewed you, is because I worked with the data.
Okay.
And we didn't wanna combine the biases that would occur naturally if we had all looked at this, 'cause we would, we would, we would be like, oh yeah, lots of people also said that. So I analyzed this, they provided yours, and then we combined them this afternoon. Very perfect timing. Okay? Any questions, clarifications on that? This is nice, this is way better than my city council meetings. Priorities. Culture building, trust, community engagement and relationship with stakeholders. The word rebuild, renaissance, reconstruct, um, coming out of the pandemic and all of the different crises that systems across the state of Wisconsin have faced, there's no one who's gonna walk into an organization and not recognize that the battles over masking and opened or closed, and all of those different things, those are gonna take place. Uh, future-focused. Uh, this came from you guys as a board. You don't know this because you weren't all in the room together, but individually, I was told that you all had said something about, we do not need to rehash nineteen eighty-eight, or nineteen ninety-six, or two thousand six, or two thousand nineteen, we need to move forward, and we need somebody who's gonna carry that for us. That was a big theme. Um, understanding of Oshkosh and the system, kids, um, unify, staff morale, community image and reputation, and then focus on finances. And there were a million one-offs, you know, turf football field, nicer windows at the middle school, but they didn't create a theme. Okay? It would be the best job ever if the main priority was to get turf football fields.
Right.
Okay? But that's not the case. Any questions about that? Because now, our, uh, HR director and comms team will get this, they will create the job posting, and we would like to get that posted on Friday morning. Anything missing?
Just, just one clarification.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Nitski, what would be the, the duration of the posting?
I'm gonna show you that in a slide in a minute. So our goal is to have it posted for about ten days, because we know that the people, so, this is what happens. Every posting we've done, whether they've been for forty-five days or three weeks, everybody applies the night that it closes. So we sit there freaking out that there's only nine applicants, and then all of a sudden, we wake up in the morning, there's forty-four applicants. So, we've talked to enough people, we, we checked with, you know, people who are in the market for a new position. Is that enough time? The answer's yes. They have their materials together, they're already working on their resumes, they're already working on their letters of rec, so, I'll show you that, I'll show you that exact timeline in a second. Any questions for me? Process-wise, different pieces? Bob?
Um, so, on Friday, you're gonna post that, you said?
Yeah.
All right, is that something that, that will be shared with us prior to it posting?
Uh, well, that's my last question, because I need to have one board member, it's usually the board president.
Sure.
Who I get to work with very swiftly to review everything. So Katie, uh, Mrs. Wertz, and yourself would get that information, uh, Thursday afternoon, Thursday evening, with kind of a four or five-hour turnaround time, change this word, do this, do that.
Sure.
And then we go out there.
Okay. Thank you.
That's how we're able to move swift. I love that I'm looking at you. Is that okay with you? Yeah, okay. So the process, obviously, we're gonna post, uh, Mark, Tara, and I start recruiting. Um, we will actually engage area superintendents as well in the recruitment effort. Um, selling Oshkosh is not gonna be difficult. Understanding Oshkosh is gonna be the part that our neighboring superintendents will do a nice job working with us on, and if you know the difference. This is a great community, this is amazing place, strong history, great industry, great community support, high passion for public education, it's a university town, you know, so every superintendent, when they went to school for their license and their degree, was told, if you can get a job in a university town, you will go to a place where people like education. And that's Oshkosh, right? Throw in there, we're the hub of manufacturing, we're the hub of learning and innovation in the state, and you've got a pretty neat place. Okay? So we're gonna recruit, we're gonna prescreen, we're gonna bring you the finalists, uh, those five, and then we'll set up the interviews, and I'll show you that process in a second. So, um, uh, Dr. Herzog, to your point before, so we're gonna post and recruit April thirtieth through May ninth. May thirteenth, we're gonna start to, we're going to do the, um, screeners at CISA Six. Then on the seventeenth, we'll come to you in closed session for your consideration for those five candidates, and then those candidates know that, uh, the interviews would take place on May twenty-fourth. Now, the system knows those dates, those dates are posted, you guys have those timelines, et cetera. Like I said, Tara, Mark, and I will review probably eight to 10 people in person, and then we will, we will move from there. One thing I will tell you is that internal applicants will be brought to you regardless of where we personally rank them, just because of the nature of, and the need of putting together succession, and ensuring that you recognize who they are. We do not eliminate any internal candidates. Well, let me, one caveat, if like, a seventh grade social studies teacher who, without a license applies, we don't bring them to you, but we will bring to you all certified, qualified, internal candidates, okay? Steph?
So are we going to interview all of them on May 24th? No, we're going to spread it out?
No, on May 7th, well, yeah, so on May 17th, the ideal situation is that we bring you those five, and you bring it down to three. Okay? Then on the 24th, you do interview all three. So we begin the interviews in the early afternoon, they're coming to the community earlier in the day, Katie and I will set up with who amongst the leadership team, we'll give them the kind of welcome to the community, but again, through our coaching process, we expect them to go learn, we expect them to go make contact, we expect them to put in a lot of the, kind of the sweat equity. And then they, we will identify through your liaison, a stakeholder's group, okay? And then if the board wants, like, specific pieces, but I will tell you right now, the one thing we do not do, and we highly discourage, is stakeholder groups ranking candidates. As a board, if you've ever been in a position to hire someone, and you've entrusted a stakeholder group for feedback, but then they rank them, and you don't choose that candidate, you put that person in an off-footing spot right off the bat. And that's something that when we talk to candidates in the application process and the recruitment process, they greatly appreciate, because there's plenty of people, some people in the room, who've been chosen number one by the stakeholder group, number two by the board, and then they come back to work, or they go back in the community, and it's just strange. We just watched the Fond du Lac process, where they had tons of different interviews and different stakeholder people, candidates getting blasted on Facebook, you know, people doing their own research, and, you know...
That's my question, so everything, all of our candidates are confidential till we pick the top three?
When you pick the top three, and then what happened is, so if I'm, if I'm, May 24th, I think is a Monday, right? So we would, we would put a press release together that on Friday at noon would go out, that these are the three finalists being interviewed on May 24th, that gives all the candidates time to address their boards, their community, get everything set up and lined up, and then positions us to really be able to, you know, kind of recruit and bring in some, some talented people. Yes?
So that on the 17th, that you bring us the five finalists, plus the internal?
Yes.
You'll bring both?
Yep, and ideally, they'll be part of the five.
Yes, that was actually what I would do, yeah.
Yeah. Because frankly, when you go back to these values and experiences, et cetera, if you have strong internal candidates, they're going to, they're going to hit a lot of those things.
Yeah. You'd bring both, that was kind of my question.
Yeah.
Both groups, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any questions about the timeline? Now here's the other thing. You're the Oshkosh area school district, you're an attractive place. If we go through the whole process, and at the end of the day, you're like, eh, not those three, well, then we just start over, then we go back. And that's the beauty of having us as your, as your search firm, I guess, or your partner in the processes, the success of the Oshkosh area school district is actually an indicator of success for our organization, your kids, our kids. So, we stay with the process, as we've talked about, for the first three years, we work with the superintendent, we do the mentoring, we do the coaching, Mark Hanson would be the assigned mentor, right off the bat, I work with them in the coaching piece, we continue our relationship with you as a board, we help you through the evaluation process at the beginning to design that, we don't tell you what to do, we ask you what you want, we should, we create the process with you, and that way, it's all identified upfront, okay? We put the goals together, and the one thing that we would really work with you as a board on, very strategically, is to curb your enthusiasm around the speed at which you want change in the Oshkosh area school district. I don't, you could have Zeus be the superintendent of schools here, and in the first six months, he or she has got to build relationships, build connections, create political capital, know the staff, win over the leadership team, and position themselves to be successful. As a superintendent, if I weren't afforded the ability to do that, there's no way I would have survived. And that's one of the pieces that we'll coach around.
Where does the stakeholder group fit in?
Stakeholder group is on the 24th.
Okay.
So, let me, I'll just, I'll show you this graphic real quick here. So, Ms. Wyman, so what happens is, top box, post and recruit, second box down on the left-hand column, we review, get eight, 10 screeners, stakeholder group and board interview, you can see in the center box up on the top there. What we would ask you as a board to do between now and the 24th is identify, who are the core people you want in those stakeholder groups? Now, what we've learned is, we would, and I would really highly encourage you, to have a team of about 20 to 25 people, representing the different stakeholder teams and groups in the community, anything larger than that, and your feedback becomes a little blurry. The process is, is they, that is a closed meeting, the stakeholders go in there, they sign a non-disclosure agreement, so that they, they know right up front, when you leave here today, you don't go talk about who the three candidates are, you don't do your own independent evaluations, you don't go to Facebook and say if they hire the number four, or Fritz, or whomever, we don't want, our job is to protect you from any liabilities, but most importantly, the liability of your integrity as an organization for the future. Because if, then the process, if your superintendent were, say, three, five years, all of the other administrators out there who are looking for jobs will remember the fact that you didn't protect the people who had applied in the past, okay? So, we do all that, our team comes in and runs the stakeholder group, and then Mark, Tara, and I work with you as a board. And we introduce the candidates, and then our process as a board is, we ask each candidate, there's 90 minutes, we do, we do an activity at the beginning with you as a board, where you introduce yourself, what you stand for, why you're on the board, where your kids, your ownership, et cetera. That allows the candidate to kind of do, build a relationship with you, or the candidate comes in and has their own get-to-know-you type of time, so they have 15 minutes. Then they have 60 minutes to prove their evidence, and demonstrate their evidence of those categories and those different pieces. They do not talk about priorities, instead, what they do is they demonstrate their skills, experiences, and values, and then line that up with what they know about the district. So we'll spend probably three to four hours with each candidate, reviewing their information, coaching them, reminding them, but then we cut it off, and it's up to them. And we sit over there in the back, and we facilitate, and we make sure things run smoothly, and/or that you don't break any laws. So one of the things that happens is, you, you, we set your little, we set your tables up, and you have all these materials on your table, there's a little note card, so like, if you want a greater clarifying question, you write it down, you hold it up like a little flag, I come scooting over, I grab the card, I wait for the right time, because I kind of know where they are in the presentation, it might be addressed, it might not be addressed, you know, and then I make sure we're legal, right? So, and believe me, you're a very smart board, there are lots of people who ask questions like, you know, I see you're, you have a limp as you walked in, do you have a disability that we should be aware of, like, and they break rules and laws all over the place. And that's when I start screaming and throwing CISA pens. Okay? So what happens then, is at the end, we do a consensus process, and it has worked phenomenally. So one of the hard things with seven duly elected board members, is you each have your own opinions, your own ideas, and your own mindsets. And what happens is, usually, one or two board members start to talk about, I really like number one, or I really like number two. What we do instead is, we put up a pad up on the wall with the names of the three, or five, or however many people we interview, you each get two little sticker dots, like you see at a rummage sale, you know, 14 cents for this book, or whatever. And then, after we've eaten, you walk up and you stick your dot, where you think is the first place candidate, and the second place candidate, and you sit back down, and honestly, it's happened every single time, there are six and one, and then there's one, you know, second place person, and we ask the question, can you live with this person as your finalist, what else do you want us to check out, or no? And it's never like, three, four, two, 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 because it becomes very obvious through your day, who's the best fit for you. Now, if we go up there and they're all number two, well, then we have a conversation about reposting, starting the process over, and moving forward, which I'm going to, I can't guarantee, but I truly believe is highly unlikely. Okay? So that's the process, you finalize that choice that evening, and then we move into negotiations with whoever your designated person is, and then, again, we do all that for you, we facilitate that conversation, acting as the agent of the district and the candidate, and coming up with a consensus and a good contract, and then positioning you with next steps, so that you can go into open session and approve that person, and then at the end of that night, we shoot out the press releases, and we help you start to work with stakeholder groups, and Katie to onboard, when are they going to come, if we have to negotiate with their current district to buy out some days so they can get here in June, you know, whatever that is. Okay? Yeah?
So your, Ms. Wyman's question about the stakeholder group, I guess, they're meeting the same day we would be meeting on the 24th? Or is their input, though, is not asked for, is what you said, right?
Nope, it is, so thank you for that clarifying question. So what happens is, they do what's called the plus Delta Wondering. So they write down the things they appreciate about the candidate, the things that may be a challenge for that candidate, if they're the finalist, and then what other questions they have that we need to investigate. So my team is in there, they collect that information that gets typed up, and then it gets walked in. So in the conversations, what you're doing is with all the paperwork, you have their resumes, cover letters, you know, their weekend application, and then you get the overlay of the stakeholder feedback, to validate or to investigate yourself. So that's how we honor that stakeholder group, because what will happen is just like this, you'll be in alignment with the community, you'll probably be in alignment with the stakeholders, if you were gray or fuzzy about a number two, right, so if we're in a weird situation where we're three, three, then we're going to start digging into the stakeholders, we're going to start to weigh that, and I walk you through that whole process. And then we go from there, and we just keep going back up and putting up our dots if we can't come to consensus, and if we can't come to consensus, I'm going to strongly recommend that if, you know, this board says we're 5-2 for this candidate, you know, until we can be 7-0, there are a lot of people who will not come to work here if the full board doesn't support them from the start.
So, sorry for all the questions, this is just so different from how we did it last time, and, so the stakeholder group, how big do you think it should be?
I would say 20 to 25 people.
Twenty, okay, so...
Yeah, thank you.
So the candidate's only exposure to like, our community will be with the stakeholder group?
In the, in the, in the beginning process, yes, in the onboarding process, it's the exact opposite.
Okay. And then, well, one thing I liked about the way we did it last time, is that we had the candidate come to town, and like, have breakfast, lunch, and bounce around the community, and get to know people, is there an opportunity for us to do that with this search?
You could certainly do that, timeline-wise, I think that's going to be incredibly difficult, and what we recommend, you know, because again, we're all sitting superintendents in one nature, is that the board has one opportunity to pick their superintendent, you're highly accountable for it, as you've learned and you see, and, and having the right person, and then onboarding them, the onboarding process versus the attraction process, I think my recommendation for your reflection as a board would be to put a ton of energy into that onboarding process, that you're each bringing people, this new superintendent early to the stakeholder groups, to the networks, to the chamber, to the rotaries, all, both, you know, all of those different pieces, before they even start, and build the enthusiasm from the beginning. So if that's okay.
Yeah.
We can hit the timelines.
Well, there's some things I love about this process that we didn't do last time, and the first being that it's going to be a lot less time-consuming on us, because we interviewed all the seven, and then it went, you know, we narrowed it down, and so, the days that they came, it was a whole day that they would come and meet the community and everything, and we'd take them out to dinner, so from the time perspective, I love that. But I do feel like I would like to see them interact with our community some way, like, because we had like a meet and greet here, and the community could come and meet one of the candidates, and, I don't know, do you know what I'm talking about?
I think, oh, sorry.
Right.
I've went through this process before on a smaller scale, and there's definitely pros and cons, but at the end of the day, all that matters is getting the right person. You know, and I want the community to feel included, however, I do also understand how things can become muddled then, too. You know, with tons of different thought processes on, you know, I thought this person was better, or that person was better, and this, this seems like a good process, and if we don't all, throughout this process, I think when you know, you know. Like, one of the administrative candidates we hired in the town of Algoma, we knew, and now he's a very good fit in the community. And if we don't know, then we might have to start over. But you've done this a lot of times, so we have to put some faith in your process as well, so that's my thoughts.
Oh, go ahead.
Ted. Is there a way that we can explain the process to our communities, that this is why we're not inviting, you know, 60,000 people to meet this person because of social media, because of this, because to protect them? I think if people understood why we're doing it like that, and not opening it up to everyone, everyone would understand it, unless we do that, we have a transparency issue.
Sure. Yeah, if I have the permission of the board, I guess I would work with Katie, and we would put together, actually, probably an infogram, you know, that kind of shows the process, the people, the pieces.
I think that would make the community feel more comfortable. That's my opinion.
I agree. And I agree with Ms. Wyman, I think we have to be completely transparent, and if they understand that the process is going in this direction for these reasons, so that it could end in a better result for everyone, that we'll get a lot more buy-in as well. So I think we got to be transparent as possible on why we're doing what we're doing, and why, you know? That's my opinion.
I understand the reason I think they're buying.
Yeah. Key part of communication. I think, and just one other consideration for you, because when you walk out, you'll be asked the questions, and one of the pieces is, that you want to put your energy into the onboarding, you know, and the introductions and the relationships, because I totally agree with you. I mean, I've, I've gone through that, walk into a community, glad hand, meet the rotary, eat breakfast, get asked really weird questions, you know, what are, what are your thoughts on gun rights? I'm a superintendent of schools, I, that's not within my purview, I want to know.
Yeah.
Now, all of a sudden, because I won't answer a question, I've got this person working against me, once I leave the room, and, you know, some other candidate might be like, hey, I conceal and carry, is that okay with you?
Yeah, right?
So that, those are the types of things, you know, in an executive search, because this is an executive position, this isn't, you're hiring, the board gets to hire one person, right? You get to approve their recommendations all day long, you pick one, right? So when Oshkosh, when they hire somebody, you know, they don't, they bring them in afterwards, when they hire a new person at Manashekor, you know, they bring them in afterwards, so, and again, we help facilitate all that. I mean, the interview day, like Sheri, like, they have this real punch list of all the things, like, we want them to feel incredibly welcome, we have a concierge, meet them here, the whole schedule's laid out, we're over-communicating, we give them a gift, you know, we give them Hughes and Oaks chocolate, they can determine on their own if they've never had it.
Yeah.
Again, that's, I apologize for that constant chocolate reference, but it is...
You're making me hungry. Yeah, I don't have a problem, like, I'm not suggesting we change anything, I'm just kind of asking questions, because my concern is, we're only going to have 20 to 25 people in that stakeholder group, and I, I wonder if the community is going to be upset that we're only including 25 people to...
That process, frankly, if you want us to be malleable with that, the one thing I'm highly concerned about is, we're in a pandemic.
Correct, we cannot have large gatherings, yes.
So the more I move that candidate around, and they're in with this group, and that group, and this group, and I got an anti-vaxer, and I got an anti-masker, we don't want to put anyone in a position to do that. And again, that's a district reflection, so, you know, I'm more than happy, we can facilitate whatever process you'd like, we've just been finding that, that nice mix of community members, administrators, teachers, you know, select staff, works out really, really well.
And we come up with the list of the stakeholder group?
Yep, so we'll work with Bob, or whomever you guys designate tonight, and what, basically, what, you know, we'll suggest is, we'll probably work with Katie, of you guys making a suggestion, she'll see themes, key themes emerge with key people, you know, really what I would suggest for you as board members is to say things like, you know, not necessarily a person, but like, you know, chamber rep, corporate rep, you know, maybe this person. And those different types of pieces, because they'll know who those highest stakeholder people are.
Sure. So, the one thing I want to say is, one, we've already been working on that list for a couple of weeks, that was sent out to all of us, I think about two weeks ago, and we've been providing input to that list, and Ted, you kind of hit it on the head of a couple of the things that I was looking for as I was trying to, when I, my suggestions, I went through the list, realized that it was a couple of years old, and that we needed to update some of the media organizations, we needed to update, maybe there was people that weren't in our community anymore, that were on there, and so we're fighting those and so we're finding those people to stick in those spots, but also making sure that one organization didn't have, didn't have more insight than the next organization.
Correct.
Meaning that there were some people, some organizations that had two or three individuals on the list as well. So we've been working on, on honing up that list with Sherry and, um, already, so. That's all, my comment is, Ms. Solaji, you've been waiting patiently.
I have, but most of it was said, that I agree that it's, what Ted said, that it's an executive decision that we are, people at this table are the ones that make the hiring, and I agree with what Mr. Wright and Ms. Wyman said about the stakeholder input process, so it was all covered.
Okay. So the one thing that I, I'd say the exciting aspect of this is, is the infographic, because I, I think it's one of the areas that, that we as a board, previous board members can, you know, we have this opportunity to learn from what we experienced the last time, and, um, and I, and I think that's, that's an element of our, that our community wants. They want us to explain a little bit more of how the process works and to be, um, I don't know if it's transparent, I don't, I personally don't think we were non-transparent in the past, but I think that type of tool does create a level of transparency and openness from the district to the community as well, so.
Yeah, well, and, and thank you for that, because it's, it's, uh, what we want to be in all of our communications is we want to be simple and elegant, right? Nobody has the patience anymore to read three-page letter, so they want to see a little picture that says, "Board makes final decision," you know, and all the different pieces, stakeholder groups and input, and nine-hundred-and-thirty-one people participated in the survey, you know, and all of those different components, and then it just goes. If you guys, you know, the one, I think the greatest lesson that we have in the twenty-first century is you cannot control social media, you can only influence it. And the stronger and simpler your messaging is, the more likely people are to accept it. Now, you're going to get criticized. I mean, you new board members, God bless you, I appreciate your service, but in four months, you will be part of the problem, you know, just like everybody else. So now it's a matter of, you know, when you onboard somebody and how they, how, what communication strategies we put, and then how we charge that person with winning over that, the different stakeholders.
Mr. Peschel?
Yes.
Uh, I just brought up the list that we've been working on, and it's fifty-seven people that we have on it. So we'll have to whittle that down quite a bit. Okay.
Yep. Yeah, that was, and that was the process, was to provide time to update that list and to go through down. And I think that's part of our role with you and probably me, is to whittle down that list down to what we think is an acceptable group of people to, to be involved in the stakeholder group.
Are we going to do that in a committee or a meeting or just with Ted?
That would be, that'll be a board piece that you guys determine the process.
So we'll have a meeting?
It'll be, it'll be part of one of either our normally scheduled meetings, or if we need to schedule more meetings to accommodate the process, that's what we'll do, so. But, um, I, I'm learning how all that stuff is going to go and my role in that all, you know, within the last couple of days, and so I'm prepared and happy to facilitate all of that, so.
I think a key element there is representative. Who, who on that list represents the community and the values we're looking for? And the, and can, and can speak for a large number of constituents. But I, I also see a huge element in the onboarding process with stakeholders. And so, um, I think that's, that's key.
Yeah, and I, thank you for that, because here's the deal. Too often we leave that, the board hires the superintendent, then they say, "Go out there and build relationships." What we don't do is we don't leverage the relationships that are existing, right? So when I became superintendent of West Bend, they were like, hey, go build relationships, and I'm ringing doorbells, not going to, who are you, what are you about? The soft introductions, the hard introductions, the right places, using the team, their relationships. So we'll, we'll provide you a process map for that and key considerations for you as a board, and then you, you, you know, we coach you to it.
It probably means a lot if we're, maybe if we take them to say, to a group that we know really well, a lot of people to say, hey, this is the new superintendent, and if we know they're connected with a lot of people, different people in a certain area of the, uh, school district, if we're doing that, you know, that probably go a long ways to helping them develop relationships pretty quickly, I would think.
It would. Again, you have to build buckets of trust, but you get a little political capital when you're new and you want to spend it wisely. Any other questions for me? Because then I have my final question. So just as a board, I need to know who is my direct and swift contact for approvals, reviews, and considerations, because we will call like, hey, just real quick, there's a doc in your email, if you can look at that in the next five minutes, because the press has called, Katie and I have worked on it, or Katie and Lisa, because this isn't me, you've got the whole CISA team working. You've got our operations division, our HR people, our, our school people working on it, so we just need to be able to move swiftly. And that would be even if this was a elongated timeline, we still want one point of contact that if, if it goes out and you don't like it, that, you know, we both get yelled at.
Sure. I'm comfortable with that being me. That's what I think typically the president of the board ends up being, and doing, being, how they end up being utilized in this situation, so. And I have the flexibility in my schedule to be able to respond in tight time frames.
Awesome. So I'll just grab your cell phone before I go, unless you want to announce it to the community here?
They know it.
It's on the web, yeah.
It's you so often, it's an eight-hundred number.
Ted, are we meeting with the stakeholder group? That's another, like, so they're going to meet separate? Or are we going to hear that we're meeting with them, or?
So the process step is, what will happen is, the stakeholder group will do their interview. So basically what's happening is the candidate's in there for forty-five minutes doing a shortened version, uh, presentation.
Okay.
And they're walking through like, so what happens is the stakeholder group comes in half hour early, our team educates them on, here's the process, here are all the things the community, it's a whole review. They hear all of the qualities, all those different pieces, they sign their non-disclosure agreement. Then candidate one comes in and does a forty-five-minute interactive presentation, because that's what we tell them, be interactive, build relationships, don't just stand up there, slide thirty-eight, stuff like that. Then what happens is their feedback gets written out, they all write out their feedback individually, they submit it individually, we compile it, type it up and create a document immediately. You know, it's like twenty minutes later, somebody will walk in, Sherry or Katie will walk in, hand those plus deltas to me, and then when that candidate walks out, I hand you their plus delta feedback. We put fifteen minutes between every interview, so that you can immediately go review the stakeholder group feedback, or, you know, take a break, get a drink, whatever.
But we don't attend the stakeholder meeting?
No, two very separate interviews.
I, I looked at that as similar in our last process. We had, um, community sessions that, that you alluded to. Um, and typically, there was usually a board representative there that was to do an introduction and to kind of keep us, keep the schedule moving and such. They weren't necessarily the most interactive person through the process because that was for the candidate and the community members that were engaging in that process, so.
Yeah, so what we do for you is we staff that. So Jason Leavash, our chief operations officer, and Becky Newbar, our executive director of HR, they staff that room. So they make sure they're there. We usually work with Dave or whomever to make sure there's a technology person sitting there, so there's no, everything goes flawless. We have punch lists for, after tonight, that they all get. So we take care of all that, so that the district can focus on the candidate and not have to put major resources towards it.
I'm, I'm very comfortable with the stakeholder process. I think this is, this is a way that it can be done in a way that protects the best interest of the, of the district and gets the most out of that opportunity for that candidate to, to indicate who they are to members and leaders in our community outside of the board. So I, I think that's, I think that's a good process.
And Mr. Peschel, I agree with you a hundred percent. I, I think that we should maybe consider a few more, though. Could we make it a little bit bigger?
You mean like the number?
Like thirty, yeah.
Between twenty-five and thirty?
Yeah.
That's not, the issue will be wherever you think, whatever facility we use, as long as it's close enough and it's got, you know, so.
Oh, in the pandemic, yeah.
So my, my question to you before, or my question that I thought, that you said earlier is that you really wanted that number to remain between twenty and twenty-five, and now you're kind of wavering on that a little bit. What's the, what's, what's the rationale, in your professional opinion, to be comfortable to go in, going higher than that?
I think as long as we can create a facility, you know, situation where people are spread out, you know, and they're safe, but that's also intimate, because one of the things we want, so if you had seventy-five people in there, what, what we're coaching the candidates to is to have an interactive presentation with the people in the audience. Right? Because I'm, as superintendent of schools, I'm in rooms of twenty-five, thirty all the time, right? And I got to swiftly build a relationship, I've got to hear your needs, and then I also have to explain all of that situation. Once we get into the fifty, seventy-five, two, three, four groups, those of us who've been through that, it all, it starts coming together. We don't get the best person in front of us at that time. So, I mean, my, my personal preference is a manageable amount is, like I said, it's between twenty-five and thirty. Twenty and twenty-five, thirty would be a, a, a kind of a max for, just my recommendation. You're the, you're the school board, you can say eighty, we'll figure it out.
Sure. So for, that's for, for each stakeholder meeting, correct?
There's one stakeholder group.
There's one stakeholder group that meets with every, every candidate?
Yes. Same people, same day, same bat channel.
All right.
At the end, will there be a compare and contrast when they get to the end? Because sometimes you, you know, your first person's like, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. And then you get to number two, and it's like, oh, I wish I would have told that all differently, definitely, right? Isn't that right?
Yeah, so one of the things is at the very end is that the team will ask, is there any other additional feedback you want to provide for the board? But we do not facilitate a conversation.
Right, but just so they have the opportunity to say, ugh, I kind of blew it on that one.
Because that's something else that we'll talk about with the candidates, is they'll, you'll hear me at the very end. You're going to get in the car right now, and you're going to think like, oh, I wish I would have said that. Text me, they all myself, text me that data, text me that reference, text me that element. We, we want to give everybody as much opportunity to be their best as possible, including stakeholder groups, teams, et cetera. Any other thoughts?
So we're going to have the stakeholders rank their first, second, third, fourth?
No, 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 we're not.
No, we're not, okay. Never, okay, good, all right.
They're just going to provide comments?
And feedback, and plus deltas.
Yep.
It'd be ideal, you know, will they know, they'll know what we're looking for as a community, so they can kind of gauge what candidate they think fits in all those different boxes that we just outlined?
Yeah.
Or that the nine-hundred-and-forty-one people that did the survey and...
Yeah, no, so what they'll get, they're going to get a little document, and they're going to get briefed at the very beginning, and basically these slides will be jazzed up, and Becky and Jason will sit down and say, "These are the core skills that we asked every candidate to come in tonight to demonstrate to you. These are the experiences we want them to prove that they have, and these are the values that they have to weave into it." Now, while that seems like a really exhaustive list, it's not, because I can explain to you how I'm child-centered and a good steward of the taxpayer dollars, and how I build relationships by focusing on kids, the staff that support them, and empowering their principles. And then I show you the process. And then you're sitting in the audience going, check, 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 good, 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 weird, wonder, delta.
A lot of them even tie into each other.
Yeah, they're all...
In order to collaborate well, you have to be able to communicate well, you know, so.
Right. This is a nice plaid fabric that will come together for you. Little Scottish reference. Anything else for me on this?
That's good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry I have so many questions. It's just so different from last time that we did it, and I like it.
Well, and I'll be honest, the, the beauty of it is that's what we hear at every, every search we've done, we hear that. And we're averaging right now a nine-point-nine on a ten-point scale with the board feedback when we're done.
That's awesome.
And the one thing that, the one thing that happens is because the process is swift, is that we've learned on the, on the backend, the communication, oh, I forgot that we were doing that, et cetera, et cetera. So like, we provide you that flow chart, you'll start to get more documents, and Katie and, um, Ms. Wertz and I will communicate that to you.
And then one other point, um, Mr. Peschel, or are you gonna, I think we kind of agreed we want to draft the letter to, so the community understands how we're being transparent about the process in the beginning?
Yep, so I'm going to put Lisa and Katie in touch tomorrow to start to design an infograph. We have a graphic artist on staff, they'll start to put that together with a communication tool, and then whatever, she knows the best way to communicate to your culture, so.
Okay.
We'll provide the framework and the artwork, and then she'll put it into place. And again, just going back, if that gets translated into the, into the core languages again, that's just amazing. Anything else for me on this topic?
Doesn't look that way.
Okay. The other question then that I have for you is because of time, it's ten to nine right now. The next topic was the high-performing board pieces, and I had to ask Bob if that would be something you'd want to table tonight so you can get into your other efforts, and I can come back and potentially combine your feedback from the Gallup survey, and then actually use that as a direct relevant lesson into high-performing boards training. Or I am more than happy to stay tonight and study World War II with my daughter tomorrow.
We'll be here till eleven probably if we don't table it.
How, so what is the consensus of the board in regards to tabling, or?
You actually have to have a motion on that.
Yep.
Second.
All right. So there is a motion to move Mr. Nitski's, um, high-performing board training to, to a future meeting where he's scheduled for workshops.
Yeah.
I believe, though, you're not available on May twelfth, correct? So it would be a date other than May twelfth.
Correct. That will be the one board meeting I would not be able to make.
Correct.
It's my half-century mark.
Happy birthday.
Well, I could come, but I would expect a lot of stuff from you.
Hughes and Oaks.
Yeah, Hughes and Oaks, yeah. And I don't want to say which our family is, but we are definitely one of those two places. One place for, okay, so thank you.
All right. So there is a, a motion on the table to move, uh, that particular workshop to a future meeting, let's say in May, maybe the second meeting in May?
I don't think we should put a date with it.
No, so a future meeting, a future meeting.
That's just my opinion.
Okay. Does everyone, go ahead, hold on, hold on, go ahead. Does it change the motion?
No, I just, as you said, not putting a date on it, I'd like to at least not just throw it out there, and then us never get to it.
All right. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to shape our conversation right now, because right now it's a motion. Um, I believe we have a second or, uh, to move it by Ms. Wyman, second by Mr. White. We can now have discussion, and I just wanted to be formal in that process, so. So is there any other discussion items on this? Yes, go ahead.
I'm fine with pushing it back, but I also think it's incredibly important for our new school board members to learn about the red tie and above the line and below the line. So I would just suggest that we don't put it off too long, like, that we make it a priority to get that done.
No, I, I agree, but in regards to how we utilize Mr. Nitski's resources right now, um, I think prioritizing his work on the, on the superintendent's search supersedes the, the high-level, high-performing board training at this point, so.
I agree.
We will try our best to have it as soon as possible.
Thank you.
And I'll work directly with admin to, to get a calendar.
Thank you.
Please take the roll.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Perzog?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
The ayes have it, carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Nitski.
All right. So, we are at, um, a request for future agenda items. Before I get us into this, I just want to suggest that in the future, if you guys, if members have requests for future agenda items, I think it's best that they are sent in advance to the board president and to, um, to Dr. Cartwright, so that it can be vetted properly in the process. So, um, so, and partially the way, what that does is that it kind of allows Dr. Cartwright and her team to determine in a timeline of when they might be able to address what the topic of that is. Um, and it might not be the best time to have it on the agenda, say, the next week or anything, but it allows them to have some lead time to prepare for it, so. And note that requests for future agenda items are not necessarily a topic of conversation, but literally just a, a request for future consideration. All right? Does that make sense?
Yep.
So, um...
I have one question.
Hold on, one second, I'll, I'll get to you. So, and then, um, again, I want to hit it home that we want to provide these requests prior to the meetings, and, and not to expect that, even if it's requested today, that it'll be on, say, today's meeting. We're going to provide a little flexibility today, but in the future, that's all stuff that we'll want you to send to the president in advance as well as the superintendent, so. You had a question?
Yeah, clarification on how the process is going to work on this board. I know that on other boards and other governmental entities, let's say one person proposes a, a gen item that doesn't...
that doesn't necessarily have to be presented by the Chair, or it can be done. But let's say if three of us presented an agenda item, would that then guarantee it to be placed on the agenda? You know what I'm saying? Cause some, some government entities, say if three people propose an agenda item from the board, then that agenda item has enough strength for them, the board, to automatically be placed on the agenda. I do, just for clarification on that.
Sure, um, I, I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna stray away from acting like I know the answer to that question because I, I don't. I do have examples and experiences where such suggestions can be considered as direction to, um, to say the superintendent or, um, or her team, but it's not, does not necessarily direct that it becomes an, an agenda item at that point. So my example is I observed this, a different body of government on the City Council where, um, a topic for a future agenda might come up and the city manager, who plays the similar role in this case as Dr. Cartwright or the superintendent, will be watching the conversation that night, that might take place around that potential discussion and, um, and then respond in a way that's affirmative to, oh, I've noticed that I've got about, um, you know, three or four nods of the head that, that look like, uh, we might wanna move forward with this. And that's usually considered kind of an open-ended conversation of considered direction. But in order to have that type of conversation, I think we need to navigate the process of, of how that gets on the agenda for future, for future consideration.
Yeah, I was just asking for clarification on that.
So, so I don't think we know the absolute process for that yet, but I think there's definitely some, some, some path for that.
Cool.
Dr. Cartwright?
If I may advise the board, um, we do have a board policy related to this. It's policy 0166 Agenda. Um, and related to that policy, it does state, um, pardon me as I scroll down to it, "Request for future agenda items. Individual board members may have a resolution item placed on future meeting list. Two or more board members in agreement will determine if a workshop item is approved for a future agenda." So I just wanted to let you be aware of what the board policy is related to that. I would also encourage, um, board members to please, uh, I would just encourage you because I, I greatly appreciate the fact that there is urgency with Mr. Nitski coming in and talking about the roles and responsibilities of board members as well as administrators, uh, because there's, there is, um, some relevance related to that that some board members may, may not be aware of at this point in time. I would encourage that process for you to be able to have that opportunity to learn about that and what are the ripple effects that often occurs through whenever specific items are added to the agenda. Uh, because there are a lot of times there, it's not saying that we are discouraging board members from wanting to put items on the agenda. That's not, that's not my, that's not our purview as administrators. Uh, but it is our responsibility to at least help you understand what are the impacts when those type of requests are made. Um, and it's also a lot of times the thing that helps guide the board as to future agenda items. A lot of times you wanna make sure you try to keep that in alignment with the district strategic plan uh, because that gives focus to the work, um, that is being conducted by, that, that, as a board, you have, you, you have said this is your scope of work to be completed administration. And so when we get outside of that scope of work, it, it does have a lot of implications. Uh, so we just wanna make sure that you're aware of that. And again, my comments to you tonight is advisement and which is just part of my role.
And I, and I completely understand that. Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. I was mainly just asking because I hope we all get along for sure or have a lot of agreement in a lot of areas. But there has been boards in the past where all of a sudden a chairman hasn't got along with a certain section of the board and they said, well, your agenda items aren't gonna hit the agenda. So what superseded that is then two or three board members would get together and say, well, we all want this agenda item on there. You know, so that, that was just moving forward and I don't foresee it being an issue. I just was asking for clarification on that.
And just for a point of clarification, just, just, just in case, be aware that you don't wanna have those type of conversations outside of a board meeting because it has been an item that's being brought for board, potential board action and that would result in a walk-in quorum situation.
It could, maybe, or not. A lot of hypotheticals there.
Okay. Dr. Herzog?
I, I don't really see this as a problem in terms of people needing to submit these in advance. There are lots of times when things come up in the meeting and somebody might request a, a future agenda item. And there are a couple of ways to look at that. Well, first of all, first way to look at it is what does the policy say? The second way to look at this in my estimation is that when you talk about future agenda items, there are at least two places where something could be placed on the agenda. It could be a workshop. It could be a written report. And again, going back to board policy, if there are suggestions for future agenda items, as we heard tonight, to move Dr. Nitski's, or Mr. Nitski's presentation on, um, effective boards, to look at, um, the, the board policy clearly states that the agendas are put together by the Board President, the Board Vice President, and the Superintendent. And then typically what happens is if somebody has requested something, they're informed or they're asked, do you want this as a workshop? Do you want this as a, uh, written report? And typically with written reports, as you've seen tonight, uh, we have kind of an executive summary given. So it's more than just, it's not buried, not buried in a written report. The written report is there, so you have that in advance. And then there's kind of an overview explanation of what's going on. So there's an opportunity for some give and take. But, uh, I can't remember an example that you just cited where a board president blocked. Um, that must've been way before my time because I don't.
No, I wasn't using as an Ashkosh School District example.
Oh, okay.
I was using as a more broad governance example.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
So I guess the process is that if you, hold on, I'm just trying to read here.
Well, while you're looking for that, historically and traditionally, board members might contact the Board President outside of a meeting and say, I have an idea for a board agenda. Or coming from one of the committees, Policy and Governance, or Facilities and Finance might ask something that they review to come before the entire board. So sometimes the request for full board agenda items may come out of a committee.
True.
Or it may come out of an individual saying, you know, I'd like this. But then there's usually follow-up with the Board President, Vice President, and the Superintendent.
Okay. So, so with that, um, so this is an opportunity for members to request future agenda items. So if you know them in advance, you can forward them to Dr. Cartwright and I. Um, or you could bring them up at this time as well. And then they will be vetted in, in for, for future, for future placement. Does that, does that make sense? Is that clear?
Perfect.
Okay. So at this point, is there any, uh, future agenda items that any board member would like to suggest?
I did contact Mr. Peschel today. There was an article, two people brought to my attention today in U.S. News. And it's an article comparing high schools in the country. And West and North are in there and there's quite a bit of difference in their performance. And so my question was, since I had two questions, there's other people that are obviously seeing this and it doesn't have to go to workshop. I just think it's important that we tell the community about the differences, why they exist, and what we're doing to bring equity to the two schools.
Okay. So again, I'm, I'm gonna try curbing discussion at this point because these weren't on the agenda and they're not noticed for discussion to the community. So thank you for your contribution. Is there any other future agenda items that anyone would like to be involved, placed? Sir?
Can I maybe clarify my last agenda item from last time?
Sure.
I had requested regarding the equity and diversity. And I had had a conversation with Dr. Cartwright and a lot of that information was already happening. There's a special committee, so it, it maybe changes that request of a future agenda item to maybe something that becomes more of a, a report.
Okay.
So I just wanna clarify that.
Which is, thanks for the clarification and that's something that Dr. Cartwright and her team do on a semi-regular basis to us.
Perfect. So, thank you.
Any other future requests? All right. Moving on, is there any announcements?
I just have a very quick announcement. That's all right. I did, um, as was noted in Ms. Carlin's, um, update on the Legislative Committee, have an opportunity today to speak on behalf of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards to the Joint Committee on Finance. And I tied that to the legislative agenda that our committee had put together. So I spoke about increasing, uh, dollars for mental health, increased, uh, funding for special education, uh, providing two opportunities to count students in the district. Typically, it's the third Friday in September. And, um, asking for a second date because what happens is students are counted on that third, uh, Friday in September. If they transfer from a private school into a public school, the dollars have already gone to the, the private school. So they don't follow the student. So if we had two head counts, that would change that. And then finally, uh, supporting the inclusion of the 2019, 20, or 2020, 21, whichever is higher as the student count number, uh, there's a three-year rolling average which determines the funding from the state. And by using whichever number is higher, that would benefit districts that had lost students for whatever reason. I can give more details as Dr. or, excuse me, Ms. Carlin noted in the Legislative Committee, but I just wanted to give you an overview that I did present on behalf of the district and looped in our priorities with those of the State School Board Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. Any other announcements? All right. I have one and I, I don't have all the correct information on it. Uh, but I do wanna remind you in your, in your capacity, as a school board member, we do meet, try to meet quarterly with the City Council, uh, the Ashkosh Common Council, and that's scheduled for, uh, May 20th. Um, I believe it's six. Usually it's about an hour, hour and a half meeting. Um, typically they, we kinda create the agenda together, um, and that agenda is still kind of forming.
Yes.
So, um, so if there are any items that you think, uh, would benefit from a mutual discussion between the Common Council and the school board, uh, please forward those items to Dr. Cartwright so that she can communicate them with the City of Ashkosh.
Question?
Yes.
Uh, it's virtual, but can we do what we did last time and come here?
I was gonna, I was gonna suggest that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Peschel.
The city right now is in this, in this stage where they're kind of figuring out uh, when they are going to start to return to in-person. I think they communicated it actually at the, at the reorganization meeting, but I don't know it exactly. But I know from when I was on the board, it was being talked about, about potentially being in-person in May. We still have the ability to, um, to be virtual in that as our, as our board. And the last time we met, we hosted, uh, everyone was virtual. We all came to this meeting, meet to this meeting room and, um, and sat in this room virtual, uh, to be part of the meeting, uh, virtually with them. So, um, and that is definitely, uh, I think at this point, uh, I think is the best thing for us to do at this point is, is to do that. As much as I, I'm getting eager to meet more in-person and, and everything as well, um, I still think it's, it's within our practice to, to be virtual in that sense, so. But, um, there, typically that meeting takes place in the conference room on the fourth floor of City Hall, um, which, uh, will, you know, would, you know, would be a tight room to social distancing as well, so. So at this moment, we're gonna meet here on the 20th at, at 6 o'clock. Okay? Um, any other announcements? Dr. Cartwright, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, seeing on, um, we are going to, to adjourn to executive session to, one, consider the disciplinary data of specific persons. 19.85 parent 1, parent F, Wisconsin State Statute. A, review expulsion recommendation from expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who is engaged in conduct while at school or while under the supervision of a school authority which endangered the property, the health or safety of others and the endanger, and the endangered property, health, or safety of any employee or school board member of the district in which the pupil, pupil is enrolled. 120.13 parent 1, parent C, parent E, Wisconsin State Statute. B, review expulsion recommendation from expulsion hearing for a high school student who engaged in conduct constituting repeated refusal or neglect to obey the rules. 120.13 parent 1, parent C, parent E, Wisconsin State Statutes. Number two, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of private, sorry, of public properties, the pub, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. 19.85 parent 1, parent E, State Statute. A, purchase of property. Three, considering the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government, governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. 19.85 parent 1, parent C, Wisconsin State Statute. A preliminary notice of non-renewal for a regular contract.
So move.
Second.
Please take the roll.
Wyman?
Yes.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Slodgi?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned into executive session.